Hey, Councilmember Robati, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear. Thank you so much.
Great. Are you getting a lot of background noise?
Not right now.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You think he's a real collaborator who's gonna sit down and work? Yeah, so who cares?
He's not a Democrat, he's a Republican.
Well... Another thing... That is striking to me. Yeah, Buru's been there forever in the day. And feels confident in the way he's always done things and he's always gonna do it that way.
...
Good evening. I call this Morrisville Town Council Work Session for February 27th to order. We have two items to be discussing tonight. We're gonna start off with an affordable... Well, first I'm gonna mention that Councilmember Scroggy Johnson is not planning on attending tonight at all. We have Councilmember Robati participating remotely, and we have Councilmember Rao expected any moment. With that being said, we're gonna start with our Affordable Housing Update. I'd like to recognize Michelle Stegall, Planning Director, Joshua Michael, Planner 2, Sarah Kirk, Mark Perlman, and Morgan Mansa to get us started.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief introduction to this item. So this work session is focused on affordable housing. And we're gonna take it in two parts. First, circle back and talk about rental assistance, and Sarah Kirk with HRNA is back with us tonight to do that. The hope and goal with the discussion is to leave with enough information that staff can proceed with drafting an RFQ and looking to contract with someone to operate that program for us. The second part of the work session will be focused on the Habitat for Humanity project, or I should call that the Potential Habitat for Humanity project. And Josh Michael, Planner 2, and Mark Perlman from Wake County will be going through that project with you to give you some updates and let you know where that stands and hoping to get some final direction on that one as well. If you're interested in any additional background, either council or any members of the public regarding how we got to the focus on these two items, there is some history in the agenda item about the different options that have been explored over the last couple of years, which have been promoted for further consideration, which haven't, and just in general what's been evaluated to lead to where we are today. But with that, I will hand it over to Sarah and let her jump into rental assistance.
Thanks very much. Do I need to... Got it. And do I need to push the button to... Okay, you're good. Great, thank you. Thank you for having me back. I am here, as Michelle said, to talk a little bit about the proposed rental assistance program that I think council had asked for more information about, building on some work that HRNA did with the town a couple of years ago. So I'm gonna just, I have a very brief presentation. I'm going to start with a little bit of an update and recap on some trends in the rental market and affordability in the rental market in Morrisville, and then talk a little bit about design and approach for a potential pilot rental assistance program. So, to start out, rents are rising in Morrisville, as in many communities, and many low and moderate income renter households cannot afford their housing costs. So what you see here with the blue stacked columns is renters who are either cost burdened or severely cost burdened in Morrisville. You can see that's increased basically every year since 2016. As a reminder, this is renters who pay 30% or more of their income on rent and housing expenses, 50% or more in the case of severely cost burdened. So you've got about a third of your renters who are paying more than they can afford on rent in Morrisville. And we've seen pretty significant increases in the number of cost burdened renters since 2014. And the orange line is the median rent, so you can see that's also been trending upward and particularly, as we've seen in many communities in the area, since 2020, it's sort of the rental growth has really even increased faster. What does this mean? This means, excuse me, that most renters with incomes less than $50,000 likely struggle to find homes that they can afford in Morrisville. The median, in order to afford the median rent, a household would need to make about $70,000. We have focused here primarily on households making $50,000 or less, just on the assumption that there are some units that are available that are less than the median rent. But really, when you get to even lower incomes, that's where people are really likely to struggle to afford their homes. These are, you know, critical members of the community, emergency medical technicians, teachers, et cetera. And they may struggle to find homes that they can afford to rent in Morrisville. So, prior to 2020, when you had your housing plan, there were plenty, there were available housing options for residents in this income bracket. When you looked at households earning less than $30,000, there was a bit of a shortage. But for households earning $50,000 or around there, it was likely that they could find housing to meet their needs. But when we look at what's happened in the last four years, we're seeing that now you have a pretty significant shortage emerging for households earning less than $50,000, and it's even starting to impact households earning less than $60,000. So this is something that's really, in the last few years, has really become an increasing issue within the community. And so, in the context of all of that, the town has dedicated some funds, and you're interested in ways to help qualified residents afford market rate rental housing in Morrisville, particularly interested in looking at rental assistance and security deposit assistance. So that's what we're gonna be talking about today. So, we've provided a bit of design guidance on what these two programs could look like, either independently or together. Just to briefly kind of recap from things that we talked about a couple of years ago now, rental assistance, we're talking about providing... Oh, sorry. For rental assistance, we're talking about providing a monthly subsidy to residents or directly to landlords in order to cover a portion of their rent. This basically helps close the gap between what rent costs and what a household can afford to pay. So for those people who are paying 50% of their income on rent, we're gonna provide a subsidy so that they're only paying 30% of their income on rent. They're gonna pay the rest of the rent. The landlord makes the same income, the household is less cost burdened. In the case of security deposit assistance, we're talking about providing a refundable one-time payment when the lease is executed in order to lower the upfront costs of moving into rental housing. This is a way to help households that don't have a lot of savings to reduce the cost of moving. It's also a way to sort of tip the balance in favor of residents or people who work in Morrisville, who may want to live here. You know, if they have a little bit of assistance to make that move, it might make it a little bit easier for them. But they would still have to pay their monthly rent and be able to afford it. So we're not fundamentally changing who can afford to live here. We're just making it easier to move here and to have some assets freed up for that. So... When we think about rental assistance, again, we focused on that $50,000 income and less. This chart shows what a household, what households earning $25,000, $40,000, or $50,000 can afford to pay compared to the median rent in Morrisville. You know, this is just kind of to show how this scales out at various income levels. But really, the point here is a 50,000, a household making $50,000 can afford about 70% of the median rent in Morrisville. If you look at lower income levels, of course, the gap is more. But this is what we use to try to size and understand the cost and potential impacts of a rental assistance program. So, with $166,000 currently allocated for this program, the town could provide rental assistance for about 10 to 25 households annually with incomes below $50,000. That's setting aside 10% for administrative costs to an operator of the program, which is fairly standard. But because of the size of the program, it's possible that administrative programs could be a little bit higher just because there's a certain amount of sort of baseline costs that could be needed that might be difficult to make with $16,000. So, you know, there's certain economies of scale that you get with a program like this, and on the smaller end, it's possible that admin could take up a larger percentage of the total cost. That said, I think we're likely to be talking about impacts in this range of 10 to 25, depending on the income of households that end up actually applying for and receiving the assistance. When we look at security deposit assistance, the town could also provide assistance to help income-qualified renters who work in Morrisville to find housing in Morrisville. The way this works basically is that the town provides a security deposit to the landlord. It doesn't ever go to the renter. The renter pays their monthly rent, and then when the renter moves out, the funds are returned to the town. For this program, I want to be clear, we focused not on the $50,000 income threshold, but on something closer to $70,000 or the median rent or the income required to afford median rent. This is because we don't want to be encouraging people to, we don't want to be helping people move into a unit that they can't afford. Could people, could somebody with $50,000 find an affordable unit in Morrisville and move into that unit and receive down payment assistance to support that move? Possibly. But as we've seen, there's already a 400-unit gap of rental homes in Morrisville that are affordable at that income level, so we don't want to assume that that's going to be possible. So we focused at this higher level to estimate the costs and impacts. You could easily, you know, scale it down to serve a lower income. But essentially, given where the median rent is currently in Morrisville, if we were to assume that you were using this funding instead to pay the equivalent of one month's rent for security deposit assistance or move-in assistance, you could serve between about 80 to 100 households. And that's based on the assumption of what would be affordable to households at $60,000 to $70,000 a year. So there's trade-offs to both of these programs. They both help offset housing costs for lower-income renters. But there's challenges around providing long-term affordability. So if we talk about rental assistance, on the one hand, you are helping people who are either paying too much for their homes or underhoused, meaning that they're in maybe a smaller home than they really need to be in. Excuse me. Or maybe they're, you know, living with friends and can't afford to live on their own. On the other hand, you don't, you don't create any permanent affordability, so the money goes into the market, it never comes back. They don't recycle to the town. There is a risk of displacement if the program ends. If you've helped somebody, you know, make their rental payments and then the pilot program ends, they can't afford their rent. Now they might be facing eviction or less legal, sorry, non, what we would call non-forced eviction. Basically, I can't afford my rent anymore and I have to find someplace else to live. It's also possible that there would be a challenge... It's also possible that there would be a challenge with landlord acceptance. Sometimes landlords want, you know, they just want to, to know that they're getting one check a month and, and might be skeptical about, oh, my, my, part of my rent is coming from the town of Morrisville. So there might be a little bit of outreach and education needed there to encourage landlords to actually rent homes to people who are participating in this program. On the security deposit assistance side, it does allow funds to be recycled more easily. Renters typically move every few years. So if somebody moved out and either was not moving to a different qualified place in Morrisville, or otherwise was opting out of the program, you know, you could get those funds back. On the other hand, it doesn't change what a household can afford to rent. Again, landlord acceptance could potentially be a challenge, probably less of an issue, and doesn't create any kind of permanent affordability for either the renter or for the unit. So when we look at potential for impacts, either for one program on its own or across the two programs, basically what we've looked at is on, on the far left, if you were to just go with rental assistance, targeting households at $50,000 of income or less, again, you could serve 10 to 25 households a year. With the security deposit assistance, serving likely six, people earning 60 or 70,000 in that range, you could serve 80 to 100 households. The 50-50 program division is just half of each of those numbers. So basically standing up the two programs separately as devised. You could theoretically have a single administrator operating both programs, but not changing the approach to either one. The far right chart shows basically what would happen if, instead of targeting those sort of more moderate income renters for the security deposit assistance, you said for households that earn $50,000 or less, we're going to help you afford your rent and we're going to pay your security deposit, which is likely something that they might need. So we have adjusted the impact of the security deposit and kind of scaled things accordingly to basically say, we're setting aside funds to help low-income households afford to live in Morrisville. If they need, if, if they're not already in a home in Morrisville, they can get security deposit assistance to move here, or rather, to move to a new home. And they can also get assistance affording their rent. And so in that instance, you can see the majority of funding is still going to the, the rental assistance, the security deposit assistance is at the bottom there, and you'd serve about nine to 18 households a year. So, there's a few different sort of rules and eligibility criteria that would need to be specified and sorted out by the town and in partnership with an administrative partner. These include things like income requirements for eligibility. We've suggested, again, $50,000 particularly if you're focusing on rental assistance as an income threshold. You could move it up and down depending on if there, if that didn't align with the town's priorities. Other requirements, based on our current understanding of council's priorities, eligibility would be for anyone who currently lives or works in Morrisville, but that once part of the program employment in Morrisville would not be an ongoing requirement, because now they're a resident of Morrisville. So. In terms of prioritization, you need to set a process to identify participants and select them. A likely, a fairly efficient way of doing this is to pre-approve people for the program, let them know that they have access to rental subsidy, and then, or, sorry, pre-approve people, and then hold a lottery for eligible participants who register within a given period and have received that pre-approval. If you have, if you went, if you are selected through the lottery, you get some specified amount of time, maybe two months, maybe four months, to find a unit or a rental home in Morrisville and sign a lease. And then if you're not able to find a, a home in that time, you could potentially then go back to the pool and, and select another person from the lottery. If the town wanted to, you could prioritize town and school system employees, either by drawing from that pool of applicants first or by providing duplicate lottery entries. You'd have to also work with the administrator to make sure that you're complying with their housing laws. When it comes to administration, of course, you want to identify a suitable partner. This is somebody who can handle monthly transactions and oversight. A housing authority would likely be a good partner, but of course, an RFP process would help you identify somebody qualified and with the capacity to do it. They need to be able to make monthly payments to landlords and then also ensure that payments stop if the participants move. They need to complete eligibility verification, including tax documentation, pay documentation. If it's, you know, somebody who works in Morrisville, you'd need to, but does not currently live in Morrisville, you'd need to establish where they work, things like that. Pay documentation should do that for you. And then a few other rules and things to keep in mind and finalize with the administrative partner. You'd need to establish rent limits for homes of various sizes, number of bedrooms, in order to not sort of create a system where landlords are going to jack up the rent in order to, you know, re, you know, capture more funds. We would recommend doing this based on fair market rent, which is set at the county level. However, it would likely, you'd likely want to adjust fair market rent for the Morrisville market, sort of pick a, a premium based on how rents compare to the county overall to, versus Morrisville. You'd need some sort of method to establish property quality, such as requiring inspections to ensure that units are habitable and safe prior to move in. Again, a housing authority already does this for people who participate in voucher programs. So that's an obvious choice for somebody to operate a program like this. And you'd want to, excuse me, do some basic landlord vetting, requiring that landlords who receive rental subsidies or security de, deposit assistance, for instance, have no delinquent taxes with the town or the county, don't have any co, open code violations, that kind of thing. So there were a few questions, I think, related to next steps and priorities for a pilot program. I'm going to let Michelle raise those.
Excuse me for a second. I want to say thank you to Sarah for going over all of that information. So again, we're looking for some direction from town council tonight in regard to the program guidelines, the, the breakdown of assistance between the two programs you might want to go with, or if you fully just want to go with one or the other. And then, lastly, wanting to talk to town council about the length of what we're referring to as a pilot program. I would argue that this is not the type of program that you want to stand up for one year. You're probably going to want to look at making a multi-year commitment. So some discussion about how long you would want to run that pilot for, so we could plan and budget for it accordingly moving forward. So, if it's okay with council, I think I would suggest, starting with that first question and going back to the program guidelines that Sarah just went over, and asking for any feedback on those. And council member Johnson, it looks like you're up first.
So can I ask a couple of, a couple of questions first? So I know, I, I heard a little bit about, in the process prioritizing, you know, Wake County employees, town employees. Refresh my memory. I thought when we, when we went down this road, that, that is who we, we, and it was public servants were the, the group that we were going to focus on. But now I'm hearing opening up the pool too. So I don't remember us having that conversation. So remind me.
No, that, that is a good point. And feedback from council on that, which definitely would be appreciated. When we've been talking about programs in the past, you may recall, we spent some time talking about a potential down payment assistance program where it was going to be about a million dollars to help 10 households. So we were dealing with much smaller numbers then. As we get into rental assistance, the numbers of people that we can help increases, and we could help more people for less money. But with that, we do suspect that in terms of town employees and Wake County public school system employees, very much still looking, we've put it as a preference prioritizing those. If council wants to limit it to just those populations, that's absolutely fine, let us know. But we think for the numbers that we're looking at, we're probably going to get beyond just those populations.
Okay, thank you. And then the, the other question I have is, I hear these two options with the rental assistance or, or just the down payment assistance or some combination. But we already have some units here in town that are designated as affordable housing units. So have we thought about how we can partner with those entities to maybe offer just a down payment assistance, and then they already are going to offer, you know, a reduced monthly rent? So what, we thought about how we can work together?
Yeah, so we have a certain number of units. I think AltaRent is the only development with those available right now, although the Slater Road Apartments are coming online pretty soon.
Okay.
And they have a, a certain number or percentage of units that need to be at the 80% AMI level. We could, in working with a housing authority, make those connections and establish those relationships to see if there's a possibility of getting people into those units. But that's not necessarily monthly assistance.
It looks like you. I would also say you're unlikely to see 80 to 100 of those units turning over in a given year.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. So the, okay, that's fair. And then, now I just lost my other thought. So sorry. I'll come back to me. Let me. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Council member Garamella?
I just wanted to be sure that this rental assistance and this down payment assistance is not just limited to apartments. It can be to townhomes, any, anything, right?
That was, that was the intention, yes, not to limit it by any, by type of property, any rental property, yes.
So because that, you know, you can get 1,600, 1,700, small townhome anywhere. So it's not. So I just want that to be open and. And did we, we fix that 160, Michelle, or did we go more than that at that time? I didn't quite remember at that time.
I think I, 166 was approved in last year's budget for this year.
Okay. And the first slide that you showed, you showed only the trend till 2023, you know, like, do we have, is it upticking or how is it?
I think it's safe to assume that the numbers went up again in 2024. That analysis was based on American Community Survey, survey data from the Census Bureau. The 2023 data only became available last month.
Okay. And so, because this is very specific to Morrisville, right?
Yes.
And, okay. I think that's all for me.
I'm, I'm going through the slides just to remind myself what my other question was, sorry.
This slide remembered me. So this, for the rental security deposit, how does it work? Suppose I took, the town paid my security deposit to an apartment A. After like, a year or so, I want to move it to a different, so that I want a veiled program, but move from apartment A to apartment B. Then am I back to zero in the line, or can you still port it?
You could work with the administrator of the program to set that up in any way that you want. I think, you know, if somebody is, has a reason that they're moving that to a comparable unit, maybe they had a, I don't know. I, I, there's lots of reasons people move. You know, the security deposit amount might be different. In all likelihood, what you're talking about is having that, you know, the, the, the security deposit when they move out would be paid back to the town, right? Because the renter never holds that. It goes from the town to the property owner and then back to the town again. You could create a mechanism whereby if that person is still income qualified for the program and is still, you know, moving to somewhere within Morrisville, that you could then put them back to the top of the line to recycle their funds. It's possible that, you know, but yes.
I just wanted to be sure because, you know, once you're out, like.
Ideally, you wouldn't want to kick somebody out of the program because they moved for some legitimate reason, like they, you know, their needs changed and they needed a different, a different home within Morrisville.
Sounds good.
But you wouldn't, they wouldn't just get a check and then go give it to a different landlord. The money would go back to the town.
Thank you.
Remembered my question, but I can, I can wait.
Can I go next?
Yeah, go ahead.
So what, what, I'm trying to be clear as to what you're asking of us tonight. Do you want us to recommend one over the other? As councilman Johnson said, I, I like this idea of a combination. My goal at a high level, macro level, is that I want a program that provides the option to have as much affordable housing as possible across the town. I think we're already in a good start with the benchmark we set with one of our recent rezonings, where we negotiated the 30% with whatever, whatever's 25, I can't remember now, but.
15.
Was it 15% and 30-year term? Sorry, I got the 30 mixed up. So that's a good start, and we've done that with these conditional rezonings. But that, you know, would it be, I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm sad, I'm torn on it. I mean, I like rental assistance because, you know, rents continue to go up and anything that we can do. But a direct deposit can also help because you just have a lot of houses out there that, you know, people, you know, just the prices keep going up and where we are. So, I mean, is that what you're asking for us today? Is like, you know, I don't really.
Yeah, that's part of it. So the first question that I asked council to focus on are the program guidelines that are on the screen, just see if we could get consensus on those.
Okay.
And then if, after that, if we could circle back about program breakdown, that would be great.
As a follow-up to that, what, what are we, I mean, Morgan Mensah's taken on the new role over there formerly from Cary for the housing. Are there ways that we can, maybe this is already going on, collaborating with Wake County and the board of commissioners in terms of programs, initiatives, funding, or am I being stupid and did this question already get asked, or should I already know this?
Well, I don't know if I should put our Wake County representatives on the spot. He wasn't prepared to talk about rental assistance.
I think it's a great question. So we actually, in the Wake County Housing Department, we have a landlord engagement unit, and we also administer our own rental assistance program. And so I think from an administrative standpoint, or at least through collaboration and technical assistance, I think there are plenty of opportunities for Morrisville and Wake County housing to work together in launching a program, however you all decide that you want to pursue it. So we haven't had examples of other towns who are like, directly participating in the program. It's very much individual-based, so it's providing assistance to clients. But we do collaborate with housing staff as well, as well as other municipal staff to identify opportunities. And so whatever the relationship you would like to be as you're embarking on this program, I think we would be more than happy to work with you to provide support and assistance and identify opportunities.
Yeah, and I would say, reiterate something that I think we said two years ago, which is, you know, to the extent that the, the town can piggyback on existing programs that the county or other partners are operating. The county has a lot of programming, and you're going to really streamline your, like, use your funds more efficiently if you can pay funds into an existing program to benefit Morrisville residents. Council member Fender?
Yeah, so I'm going to just go down your questions and answer them. So I'm in agreement with your program guidelines. I, I, I would like for us to prioritize town employees and then also public school employees as well. I would like to see us split the program between the rental assistance and the security deposit assistance, because I do think, you know, for a lot of people that for a lot of people that, you know, having that, the security deposit and upfront, first month's rent can be a big barrier to getting into the, an apartment. So I think that is important to, to be able to provide that for some people. So I would like to see us do, be able to do both. And then as far as how many years to support as a pilot program, you know, I'm thinking a minimum three years, if not five years, would be a good start to do that. That's all I have.
Thank you. And in terms of the program split, are you thinking the 50-50 split or having someone be eligible for both programs, which would put you in the 9 to 18 category?
I was thinking 50-50 because I think there's some people that only need the security deposit assistance.
Thank you. Can you hear us, Councilmember Robati?
Hello?
Hello.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Oh, okay. So I'm in agreement with the program guidelines. As you laid them out, I think this is really great work. I would like to see the, I would like to also see us offer 50-50.
I'm so sorry, Councilmember Robati, to interrupt you, but we are having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, hold on. Let me...
That's better.
That is better. I'm not sure if you changed anything.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't, but you can hear me now?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, great. I would like to see us do the 50-50 split. I think that it's great to be able to offer both down payment assistance and rent assistance, but I'm wondering what, that doesn't preclude someone from applying for both, does it? I mean, if there was a situation that warranted it, I don't see why we couldn't provide both to one family. So that's my thought there. I'm supportive of running the program at least three years. I also would like to see us make the pilot for five years. The only thing is, I, so I keep asking this, and I feel like it's never been answered. Has anybody talked to W., Wake County Public Schools about us offering an employment benefit to their employees? Because the way I understood it, this would only be for teachers that teach in Morrisville. Is that correct, or have we changed that? Yes, it's been a while since we've reached out to them, probably a couple years. But early on, we did coordinate with Wake County Public School System, and they did a survey of their employees. You may recall, we did a survey of town employees and WCPSS employees to gauge interest in different types of programs. And so there was some outreach to them and initial communication at that time, but it has been a couple of years. Right, but I guess I'm not really asking how many WCPSS employees would be interested in the program. I'm asking if we should be providing an employment benefit to people that are not our employees. Like, nobody's more pro teacher than me, but that seems like kind of a big step to take there.
So, Councilmember Robati, I had some interaction with Chair Hagerty from the Board of Education about my roundtable item, and they are definitely open to the suggestion of having benefits from outside entities helping them with their employees. And they have, like...
Okay, well...
Dedicated staff to help to, to do that. So I hope that helps address your question. Even though we weren't talking about this in particular, that's more of a general.
Okay, so I guess then I would like to hear from other people of the council about whether we, whether that's something we should do. If everybody is all for that, then I'm for it too, I guess. That, you know, then I'm not going to, you know, I'll let it go. It just seems like if we're going to have, I just think that we should focus on our, our own people before we go outside and look for people that work other places. That's all I have. Thank you.
Just a follow-up on, I think as we're thinking about the, the 50-50 split and thinking about making funds avail, both pools of funds available, I think one thing that is worth keeping in mind, certainly you could, you know, we, the 60 to $70,000 income level that we sized the security deposit assistance at was as a way to estimate approximately how many households you could serve. It certainly does not preclude you from saying, you know, this is assistance that's available to households earning up to $70,000 and could certainly serve households earning less, including households that might apply for both programs. I think one thing that I would recommend is you could set that as a 50-50 split as a target, but allow funds to float between the two programs in case one of them ends up getting a much more interest than the other one does. Mayor Colley?
Okay, so I just had a quick question first about, usually I hear about first and last month's rent. So is that different than the security deposit?
Everybody has different standards. We have used one month's rent as, as a standard. I think it's a standard we've seen in the market generally. I don't, we didn't call specific properties in Morrisville to ask what, what they're currently charging. But I think, you know, one month rent is a standard and it is assistance. I don't know if it would cover 100% of the upfront cost for everybody, but it would certainly be a form of benefit.
Right, so it, it helps that barrier, but we're not sure if that would fully overcome the initial barrier.
Right, or another way of putting it is you could commit to funding whatever the move-in costs are for that property, but we've just sized it based on one month's rent. And so it might be, we said 80 to 100, it might be 40 to 100 if some places are going to ask for one month's rent and some places are going to ask for two months' rent.
Okay, sounds good. And when it comes to the programs and the tiering for the eligibility, I'm most interested in our town employees who actually live in town. I want this to be for taxpayers first. So we're talking about living or working, but I, I'd like our first monies to go to people who are actually living in town and working wherever. So that would be for that. And then I'd, I like the idea of floating the money in between the two funds. I think both funds will be helpful to a number of people. So I'd be in favor of that. Three to five years, I think, is a good place to start. And just to be clear, this is $166,000 per year ongoing. So that would be the commitment every year to move forward. And if we get to revolve some of it, it just means that we can serve more people in that way. And like next year, we'd maybe serve almost twice as many if the money stays.
Yeah, I think we'd start with the 166 that council previously approved, and then this is new to Morrisville. So we're going to learn as we go and be able to kind of get a feel for the interest, the interest that there may be in the different programs. And it is possible we could come back to in a future budget year and request more than the 166 or less than the 166, but that would be our, our starting point.
And I guess I'd also want clarity, because it was mentioned this would be just for teachers, but I thought it was for all Wake County employees, Wake County school employees? Or we just need to decide that and parse that out, right?
Yeah, it's not just teachers. It's all Wake County public school employees that work in schools in Morrisville. And, and just to clarify from earlier, the survey that we sent out, we didn't send that out. We coordinated with Wake County Public School System, and the School Systems Administration sent that out to their staff.
Okay. And I like the idea of partnering with Wake County and making things happen, but does that limit our ability to say that our staff goes first if we're commingling the money? So I think it's probably still valuable to leverage it, but if we're losing control, that's something we should be aware of.
I, I can't speak to what the county would say, but I, you know, I think it is possible to use their same administrative processes with a separate pool of funding.
Okay.
Theoretically.
Okay, getting head nods. Okay. Yep, I think it's probably Councilmember Johnson first.
We had Councilmember Robati next, please, to speak. I'm so sorry.
Well, I think Liz was up first for her second round.
I already spoke.
Your hand is still raised, ma'am. Would you mind lowering it?
I don't know how to lower it. I'm working on it.
Just click it again.
Okay, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. I finally remembered my question, and you sort of kind of answered it, but I want to go over it one more time. So on slide 16, everything, all the figures you put on there and the number of households we can serve, is that for those that are earning less than $50,000? Is that...
The rental assistance only is for less than $50,000.
Okay.
The security deposit only, as shown here, is sized based on an assumption of one month's rent payment for households earning 60 to 70,000 dollars.
Okay.
You could set it differently. The impacts would just be a little bit different.
Right, 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 right.
So this is, this is not a recommendation slide. It's trying to size the potential impacts.
Okay. No, wait. Why don't you wait?
But yes, in this case, the, the middle two, the middle two blocks, the security deposit is sized for...
Maybe not. Can we have one conversation? It's really, it's really hard.
The, the middle two blocks, the security, security deposit assistance is sized assuming 60 to 70 percent, 60 to 70,000 dollars of income.
Got it.
You could set it lower than that. I think the, the right thing is probably to set it up to 70,000, but just recognize that you don't want to get somebody who's not in a home that they can then afford the rent on. That's, that's all. We're trying to, this is more about trying to estimate how many households you could serve with different allocations of funding than about making a particular recommendation about who gets what.
Okay, okay. That, that's good, because then I was going to say that ties back to your slide seven, when you talked about there's not only less than 50,000, but less than 60,000, we have a shortage. And then, you know, you, I would tell, you know, it looks like 80,000 is okay, but I, 70,000 is concerning to me, too. So, and so then that ties back to your, when you talked about the, the slide that shows the eligibility, it says income less than 50,000. So...
Yeah, this is, this is primarily focused on the rental assistance or the sort of far-right version.
Got it.
Here, but if you wanted to swap out the number 50,000 for the number 70,000 for the secure, it would be similar set of things. This is focused on the rental assistance, but you could very easily make a few changes in order to adapt it for this, serving a higher income at the, the security deposit.
Okay, because I would like to do, I would like to make sure that we're doing 70 and lower. And I would like to make our town employees a priority, for sure. After that, if we're going to open it up, I don't know why, well, maybe it does in the hierarchy of priority. If we're going to open this up to the general public, well, then first priority would be the town of Morrisville, second priority, other public servants in other government agencies. That would include Wake County Public School System then. And then, and then the third tier would maybe be the general public. I don't, if, if, I don't, maybe that would help, because I heard what Councilmember Robati was saying. So maybe that would help. They are too. But, okay. And so I'm, I'm also with the, I, it needs to be a three to five-year plan, and a, at a minimum, three years. I'm not sure we're going to be able to evaluate, you know, after one or two years. So it's got to be a minimum of three years. And then I think I'm okay with the 50-50 split. I, I think we can come back and revisit this anytime we want. Obviously, if we have people in place, you don't want to displace them because we decided to change the program. So I think we have to think about that. But I, I think, I think we all reserve the right to tweak this program as we move forward. And maybe that needs to be a statement upfront, too. I don't know. Well, it's going to, we're going to have to tweak it anyhow, because the world's going to change in three years anyhow, so...
Mayor Colley?
So part of my hope with this program is that we would be able to encourage more town employees who don't live in town to actually live in town, to try to remove that barrier. So I'm not sure if this is set up in that way that it would be an incentive for them. Like, is, is it hard for people who are already here, who aren't already here, to actually go through the process? Because the timing of things, like, if this takes a long time, they're going to have to sign something before they get the deposit, for example. So is there a way to address the fact that that's part of my goal, is to get more employees living in town?
Ollie, everybody's going to be on a lease that starts and ends at different times. So there's really no way to get around that exactly. I think...
I guess like when you're getting, you're pre-approved for a mortgage or something like that, is, could we have some kind of program like that?
Yes. So what, what I had mentioned earlier was, you know, you pre-approve people, then they go into the lottery. You know, if you're selecting first out of town employees, maybe whether they live in Morrisville currently or not, then they get a notice, oh, you know, you've been awarded this, this rental assistance. You can set, you give them a certain number of months to find a home in Morrisville. I had said maybe two months, maybe four months, but if you really want to size this to say, we want to make it as easy as possible to get as many town employees to live here as possible, you give them longer. You say you have six months. If, at the end of six months, if you haven't found, you haven't signed a lease in Morrisville, we can ask. If you're about to sign a lease, maybe you get an extension, but we're not going to extend it more than, you know, another two months beyond. You can, you can size it like that, I think, in order to, to make that work. I don't know the exact right way to do that, but that's, I think that's probably the best approach to make it as easy as possible for town employees before the funds then cycle into other potential participants.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
That said, you're then, you know, pushing your, it's going to take that, then six months before you can really tell kind of what kind of uptick you're having, but yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fender has...
I was first.
Okay, Council.
So my question is, when we are doing these kind of things, like, you know, what TJ's talking about, don't we violate the fair housing law? Like, you know, it's the taxpayers' money, and we are telling them, we are giving priority to our own employees for the town. So for our benefit, I, I feel, I don't know, because for me, I feel like that is, we are using taxpayers' money for our people.
I mean, that's why you pay them, right?
That's, but that's a different thing, you know?
Yeah. I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah, your paying is like because they are, they are working for us. So this is when you're using everyone's and then saying, pigeonholing to certain thing. I, I just want to know what the rule is for, that's more important to me.
Yeah, and I have two experts at the table, so I'll make a broad statement, and then they could tell me I'm completely wrong if they want to. I think, it's my understanding that when you're using local dollars, you have much more discretion than when you're using dollars at like the federal level in terms of how you structure your program.
That's true.
Thank you. You do have more discretion. So employment is not considered a protected class, and so selecting people for participation in a program based on their, who their employer is, it can open you up to risk. So it's kind of risk mitigation. Is somebody going to be considering a lawsuit because they felt they did not get an equal opportunity to access public resources? Even though they come from the town of Morrisville, they are still technically public resources. So it, it's just a question of what kind of risk tolerance does the town have? That's my opinion.
Thank you. That's a better answer than I could have given.
Okay. Did you have anything else, Mayor Pro Tem?
I did not understand. Like, when you're talking about the rest...
based on their, who their employer is, it can open you up to risk. So it's kind of risk mitigation. Is somebody going to be considering a lawsuit because they felt they did not get an equal opportunity to access public resources? Even though they come from the town of Morrisville, they are still technically public resources. So it, it's just a question of what kind of risk tolerance does the town have? That's my opinion.
Thank you. That's a better answer than I could have given. Did you have anything else, Mayor Protem?
I did not understand. Like, when you're talking about the rest, so is it okay or is it not okay?
It's a mic.
That, that's what I'm thinking, too, so.
Yeah, so I mean, there may be risks associated with it, but I think you, you have a town attorney's office who.
Yeah, the, the reason I say, like, when we had, uh, have that for humanity last time, and we were doing that, and I remember they said, we can't do that. It is for everyone. So that's, that is what I'm using my basis when we are trying to do that. And that is the reason I'm asking, like, you know, can you have these kind of rules which are legally binding? You know, so because tomorrow someone else will come. I don't have unemployment. You're using my tax dollars, and.
Yeah, I mean, we very specifically said that with the prioritization, you do make sure you're complying with fair housing and talking to a lawyer who can help you navigate that.
Sounds, sounds fair.
Yeah. I can't be more specific than that.
I'll just generally say we wanted to stand up this program without being involved in reviewing all the documents and agreements as we went along.
I feel like we've talked about this before. You know, we've talked about this, this very same subject before I went for inkspen in the room. So. Can I go now?
Councilmember Fender.
I guess the first thing is, I think it's to the advantage of our residents to have our town employees engaged in our community that, um, you know, especially if it's our firefighters or police officers. If they are living in the community and working in the community, then they are more vested in the community and could quite possibly, I would hope, give better customer service. And then, you know, everyone benefits. So that goes to speak to, you know, it's benefiting. And, and then they, if they're living in the community, they are taxpayers as well. So it benefits everyone. And Liz, I apologize that we were talking, when you were talking, I was pointing out to the mayor that, because he had originally said that he wanted to prioritize employees that are already living in Morrisville. And I was pointing out that if, you know, one of the qualifications is that they need to be making $50,000 or $70,000, they are most likely not living in Morrisville. And we want them to live in Morrisville. So, um, so that goes to my point that, I mean, that's what I'm in favor of, is, is incentivizing our employees that are not living in Morrisville to move here, especially like our police officers and firefighters, so that they can be policing in the community in which they live.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, so I think I have heard a majority in favor of the 50-50 split. And there seems to be a general consensus on three to five years for a program. I'm not 100% sure where we stand on, um, the program requirements in general. It sounds like council is in agreement with, but it's really the conversation about town employees and public servants. So if possible, we could just go very quickly, one by one, just to double-check where a majority is on that. That would be helpful.
What would the prompting question be? Like, to be really clear.
Yeah, I have heard, um, the original proposal was to prioritize town staff and Wake County Public School staff. I've also heard throughout the, the conversation, just prioritize town staff, or let's prioritize town staff, other public servants, and then the general public. So it'd be good to get some clarity on exactly where we are there.
Yeah, we can, so, um, I'm a little hesitant in year one, opening it to the general public. I think I'd feel more comfortable starting with town of Morrisville employees. And I would even, it doesn't, for me, it doesn't have to be just Wake County Public School System employees. It can be, I think it could be, I, this is the first time I'm thinking about this, quite frankly, because we didn't talk about any other groups of people. I think it'd be anybody in a public entity, kind of governmental entity, public servant. The word "public servant," and I know we need to define that. And I think I would stop there. Because I, I, and I'll tell, and you can tell me if I'm, I'm wrong, but I'm a little concerned if we open it up that, you know, there's a limit to how many people we're going to be able to help with the money we have to find right now in year one. And I'm a little worried about, and again, I could be wrong, but opening up and then overloading the system and then giving false hope to people. I, I think I would, and I thought we had talked about this, about trying to start out slowly and then add and grow this program. So I, I'm good, I'm good if we want to just stop at town of Morrisville employees, because I'm hearing that from Councilmember Robati, I think, but she'll weigh in. But I'm okay with stopping there. I'm also okay with just kind of stopping at public school system or public servants in general. But I think that's it for me.
The only comment I would make there is if we limited to just town employees, I would be surprised if we used up all the money.
Yeah.
Just with the number of people that you could potentially help there. And when you're talking about public servants in general, are you also talking like nurses, healthcare workers?
Ah, so that's a good question.
It'd be good to get some clarity on that.
No, I was talking government entities. But, um, yeah, you're right. You're right, we can go down a whole host, a whole road. No, I was really thinking about government entity, public servant employees. You're right, public servant, yep, the definition matters, right? I guess I just don't want to, and again, maybe I'm, 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 I'm thinking it would be better to slowly ease into this program with the groups of folks we really want to focus on as a priority, and then continue to open it up as we, I mean, that, that, it doesn't mean we can't open it up six months into the program. We don't have to wait a year. We don't have to wait the three years. I'm not, I'm not advocating that. But I, I think I want to tread a little carefully, or a little, not carefully, but a little slowly, so we're doing this right.
Mayor Protem?
I don't have an opinion, because it's money, you know, wherever it's going, because it'll do public good. That's, that's how I take it.
Okay, Councilmember Raff?
Just, I want to make it a success. Start, you know, with town, town residents, town employees. And then for Wake County, I have no problem with supporting, you know, Wake County Public Schools, but I think just making it any, I don't know how we define "public servants," but, you know, it could be people working Wake County EMS. It could be people working in different divisions of Wake County. I mean, you know, and I think, you know, like, you know, we, we, I want to make affordable housing work in Morrisville first. And then, once it works, then we can expand it beyond, so.
Okay, Mayor calling.
Mostly in agreement with that, the idea that, um, I'd, I'd be comfortable with tiers. Like, when you have the pool of applicants, you separate them out. And then the first group would be town employees. Second would be Wake County Public School employees. Third would be Wake County employees, and state government employees, and then maybe stop at that. And I'm not sure about the timing of how it's administered, but kind of like our citizen advisory committees, it's kind of a rolling process. And then maybe after three months, we do a pool, and then we do awards. Wait another three months, do another pool and awards, and then sort of see where we are. So I'd be comfortable with that kind of a tiered approach, so that we don't, um, so we're prioritizing who we want to prioritize first. Hopefully, we will use all the funds and help as many people as possible.
Councilmember Fender?
I'd like to figure out a way to keep it as simple as possible. But prioritize town employees, and then public servants, like Councilmember Johnson suggested.
Councilmember Robati?
I als, excuse me, I also agree with Councilmember Johnson.
Sarah, did you have anything else?
No, thank you all for having me again.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Really appreciate it.
Michelle. Do you, do you have clarity on the split of the program? Do you have consensus there?
Yeah, I believe the majority were at a 50-50 split. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
With some flexibility, so we don't not use funds because it's in the wrong pool or something.
I have feeling with this one, you know, we'll give council updates as the program develops and we gain experience. But we're going to learn, and I suspect we're going to need to adjust it as we go and we learn.
How much time, Michael? How much time does one?
How much time for the next portion of the presentation?
Because we are having our time.
That's really up to.
To us.
All right. So thank you again to Sarah. Very much appreciate your assistance. And I think we're going to change gears and move on to talk about the potential Habitat project on Church Street.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So this is for the affordable housing on Church Street. This is the Habitat for Humanity proposal, and we're also going to look at some potential other options. So a very brief recap of what has been discussed before. So the town is looking at a partnership with Habitat for Humanity. The proposal was to build nine to 11 townhomes at 101, 103, and 105 Church Street. The funding asked was for approximately $737,000 from the town, in addition to the land donation of 101, 103, and 105 Church Street. The strategy for Habitat is that those homes are sold at appraised value, and then Habitat for Humanity provides affordable financing options and two loans. The challenge, of course, is that required subsidy gap is pretty significant, and proposed townhomes may not provide enough density to justify best use of the land. Some feedback from the prior two meetings. The financial commitment, their town council has expressed concerns regarding that $737,000 subsidy with the land donation. Also, town council did ask for true market value, which was assessed at $890,000 for those three parcels, which is much higher than the appraised land value. Town council asked for looking at some partnership. You underscored the need to secure additional partners to bridge that financial gap and ensure the viability of the project. You identified Wake County as a potential partner for funding, and you've also raised questions regarding Morrisville's eligibility to partner with Wake County. Town council also asked to look at resource allocation by other towns and cities in the area. They've allocated resources to support affordable housing projects, and of course, Wake County will go over some of those. And then there's also, that has been brought up in past meetings, equity and perception of fairness. So there may be concerns from residents regarding why certain individuals receive subsidies, while others do not, potentially leading to questions about fairness and equity in the allocation of public resources. So our engagement, staff's engagement with Wake County, we've had several meetings with Wake County and explored various funding opportunities, challenges, and potential partnerships related to the Habitat for Humanity project. We focused not only on available resources, but have also explored alternative approaches, such as a mixed-use plan development, which could incorporate Lytech funding. And of course, Wake County's presentation is going to provide some further insight into these possibilities as well as to the Habitat for Humanity project. So with that, I'll pass this over to Mark Pearlman from Wake County.
Perfect, thanks very much. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for having me. Quick shout-out to your fabulous planning staff. It's been a pleasure to work with them and collaborate on this, as well as many other things, and ongoing conversations. So really pleased to be at the table. So not to, I think Josh has really laid out the reason why we are here. I do want to just preface this by saying, you know, by looking at some of the other options, I think I want to keep this conversation, or my goal in this presentation, was to stay rather high-level, a little hypothetical, particularly when looking into what else may be feasible on the site, because some of the analysis that we did about these parcels is pretty preliminary, so we have a, a pretty good sense of what might be possible. But to truly understand, for example, an exact unit count, an exact square footage, exactly what's feasible on the site and how much that would cost, would require further conversation and further analysis. So a grain of salt to begin the conversation. So first, to talk a little bit about the Habitat for Humanity proposal, and specifically some of the benefits, some of the challenges, really just kind of setting the stage. So as Josh mentioned, looking at nine to 11 townhomes, these would serve households earning 80% of the area median income or below, and with a subsidy need of approximately $67,000 per home. And this came out of a pro forma financial model provided by Habitat for Humanity. And so for a reference point, so Wake County has provided investments in financing affordable homeownership development before. We are currently also evaluating a proposal from them in the town of Apex for a similarly-sized townhome development, and they're asking for over $70,000 a unit. So I think what I want to illustrate is that, one, the subsidy cost for creating affordable homeownership is typically going to be greater than for affordable rental projects. And that's simply because they don't have access to low-income housing tax credits. And also, when you're working with Habitat, as Josh mentioned, because their model is to sell the homes at appraised value, they're very concerned about devaluing the surrounding neighborhood. So if you're in a higher-value market, such as Morrisville, it's going to require a greater level of public investment in order to make it affordable, especially if you want to make it deeply affordable. So I'll talk a bit about some of the direct capital investment sources that Wake County can provide. I did want to mention that we do provide homebuyer assistance loans up to $50,000 to first-time homebuyers, earning up to 80% of the area median income. So that's an overlap with the potential buyer base for this Habitat proposal. But the caveat to that is that those loans are provided directly to homebuyers. We haven't ever earmarked homebuyer assistance funds for a specific project, and they're provided on a first-come, first-served basis. So it's not guaranteed that this funding source would flow into this project if it were to, to come to fruition, but it is a potential. So some of the funding opportunities that we can offer, so we have our Affordable Housing Development Program. This is our flagship program. We provide gap financing investments to support the development of affordable rental and homeownership housing. As I mentioned before, we've partnered with Habitat specifically, as well as some other affordable homeownership providers. The Raleigh Area Land Trust is one of them. I don't know if you've had any conversations with them. But we do this by providing low-interest loans for construction or acquisition directly to developers. So they will apply to us through a competitive request-for-proposals process. This is the process that Habitat has used for their other projects where we've partnered together, and so we interact directly with them. We typically, if there are municipalities that have and are willing to contribute funding to support these projects as well, we are always eager for that partnership. But that's, you know, it's on a project-by-project basis. We also have the Community Investment Partnership Program. So this is our community development block grant funding, block grant-funded program for housing and equitable public facility developments. This is a program that is accessed directly by municipalities. So we release an annual request-for-proposals process. We actually are wrapping ours up for this year. But we've offered it every year, and we provide grants directly to municipalities to support these types of projects. And so when thinking about a Habitat for Humanity proposal, for example, it may be providing a grant to the town to help support infrastructure development, site clearance, anything that might support the development of the land before you get to vertical construction, because CBPG can't be used for that. So we, it's also, we provide grants typically up to $250,000, understanding the funding needs of this particular project. That's not all that much relative to the grand scope of things, but it does make a dent when you're looking at, I think it was, $737,000 total. And then there are other sources. So these two are not mutually exclusive. But the caveat to all of this is, of course, that it's all dependent on funding availability. So through the Affordable Housing Development Program, we're April 10. So through the Affordable Housing Development Program, we're able to advertise $10 million to $12 million annually. We're very fortunate to be able to do that, but in a very high cost and high interest rate environment, affordable housing development is more expensive than it's ever been, and so those funds do go quickly, and there's also significant demand, and in particular, from low-income housing tax credit rental developers. And of course, with CDBG, with the current federal environment, it's something that we're keeping an eye on. The federal budget, and particularly the HUD budget, is kind of a question mark. So the availability of these funds is dependent on that as well. And I want to invite you all, I don't know if it's protocol, I'm happy to receive questions as we, as I'm going through the slides, but if it's protocol to hold till the end, we can do that as well. So some benefits and challenges of the Habitat for Humanity proposal. So we understand that, that one of the primary concerns is the cost. So it's a lot of money for maybe relatively not that many units. However, if you're investing in a homeownership project, you're creating opportunities for generational wealth building. You're also creating opportunities for housing stability. So even in an affordable rental project, there is potential for rent increases year over year, and that can be difficult for very low-income, in particular renters, to sustain. So if you're in a homeownership, if you get into a sustainable homeownership situation, you're more stable, you're insulated from some of those market changes, and so you have somebody who has a more stable situation. And of course, the last note is that Habitat for Humanity is a trusted partner. If you are working with Habitat for Humanity, I can say that you can go into it with trust that what they propose to do, they are going to be able to accomplish. And they have the backing of a, not just a national, but a global organization, and so they can make things happen. Some of the challenges, as we mentioned, of course, cost effectiveness and financing. So is this the right kind of return on investment for the town? And if it is the amount of money that's required, how is it going to be financed? Does Wake County have funding available? Does the town have funding available? Are there other funding sources that could be leveraged to accomplish this? Is it the highest and best use of the land? And we'll talk about this a little bit more, a few slides down the road. We think there may be some greater density potential on this site, but it's also a question of value. And then finally, one of the challenges is depth of affordability. So with Habitat, their model targets 80% of the AMI and below. They have been willing to target lower income levels. So we've been worked, we've worked with them to target even as low as 40% of the median income, but it requires more subsidy. So it can be more feasible to achieve deeper levels of affordability with a rental project. But again, it's kind of a question of priorities and values. And really, I think one of the purposes of the discussion is to help the town think through, what are those priorities when determining whether to move forward with a project or what to do with these parcels? So I wanted to provide some examples of other developments that we have done or that our other municipal partners have done on publicly owned land. And I think to preface that, the main takeaway is that this is really meant to illustrate, unfortunately, in this high-cost environment, land alone is not enough to provide enough subsidy to make an affordable housing development feasible in every case. So I think everybody at the table is aware of the benefits of developing on public land, especially for affordable housing. You have control over the use. Stakeholders from the town have a greater influence on the development, and so it can really be public-led rather than developer-led. It can also lead to permanent or very long-term affordability, either through conditions of conveyance, if there is a fee simple conveyance of the land, or we've seen a lot of success entering into long-term ground leases with development partners, which maintains public control of the land, and it can be for a 99-year term, which creates effectively permanent affordability on the land. And of course, subsidy. So land cost, one of the most significant costs of any real estate development for affordable housing development, is particularly difficult because the land for an affordable housing development costs just as much as the land for a market rate development. But you don't have the income to be able to offset some of those costs. And so as we're going to explore on the next slide, while it's an excellent source of subsidy, and we always encourage, not just within Wake County, but our municipal partners who are willing to engage in leveraging public land for affordable housing development, great first start to providing subsidy into a development. So these are some of the examples of some of the projects that we have done or are in the process of engaging with on publicly owned land. So it's a combination of fee simple conveyance as well as long-term ground lease, and it's also a mix of, the first three are all, although Marigold is non-Lytac, but these are affordable rentals, and then cottages of Idlewild, I would consider to be the most comparable to the Habitat proposal. 18 units, mixed ownership and rental, 14 ownership units, and four rental units. This is on a piece of land that is owned by the city of Raleigh. It's near downtown Raleigh. They're going to convey the land to the Raleigh Area Land Trust for a dollar, and then all of the units will be governed through the community land trust model, and so they'll be affordable in perpetuity. But as you can see, it is not cheap at all. Over $120,000 a unit to make this feasible. And so what you see is when you do have, and I think this is what is being experienced with this potential Habitat proposal, so we're getting permanent affordability out of this, and I think that's really a prerequisite to invest this much money per unit. But when you have these smaller developments, you don't get the economies of scale that you can get by making public investments into larger developments. So some of these infrastructure costs and site development costs, they're fixed. They cost the same amount regardless of whether you're putting 18 units or 180 units on the site potentially. But really, the big takeaway here is that each of these has free land, and there are still significant public investments required in order to make the developments feasible. Um, that's my sense. So five, six, seven, 10 years ago, it would have been more feasible to just donate land and have a successful affordable housing development. But with the rapid increase in cost throughout the pandemic and with interest rates where they are, it's very, very challenging to have it be possible. No, that's an excellent question. It is harder than it has ever been. Absolutely. So this kind of prompted the question and discussion with colleagues here, you know, taking a look at the site. You know, are there other possibilities? So we understand town council is concerned by the subsidy need for an affordable homeownership development. Would town council like to see more density on the site? If so, is that feasible? And we took kind of a loose swing at that, and we'll talk a little bit about what the possibilities might be. And if continuing to pursue affordable housing, which we would advocate for, I have to say this is a really choice location for some affordable housing. So we'd love to see it on the site and are happy to partner to help make that a possibility. But if continuing to pursue affordable housing, how much subsidy would be required in order to make that possible? So we, we took a look, trying to get a sense of site, what's the capacity of the site? What are the development constraints? Again, this was a very high-level analysis. We found that residential, rezoning to high-density residential would permit a higher density, but going even farther, a planned development district might allow mixed-use or high-density multifamily. And we did find, taking a look at the location of the site, it might be competitive for a 9% low-income housing tax credit development. So you have 9% and 4% low-income housing tax credits. 9% are competitive. It's very location-specific. You have to have a perfect location in order to qualify. And our loose sense is that this site might qualify for that. And so that provides a significant amount of subsidy. But again, this is very preliminary. We absolutely recommend further analysis. We understand, I think there's some road widening that may be going on in the vicinity, and that can impact what's actually achievable on the site. But we did find that there were some possibilities. So what we saw, a couple, a number of different scenarios. We felt that multifamily up to 75 units may be feasible on the site in a planned development. It could be mixed-use. It could be residential-only. It could be mixed-income. It could be 100% affordable. Each of those variations comes with its own wrinkles. So if you are doing, well, and first, before discussing those, if you want to achieve the highest density on the site, structured parking becomes necessary. So if you want to have surface park, you can't have as many units. To have the parking required, you get into structured parking. That adds to cost significantly. Right now, we're looking at $40,000 a stall is kind of the current estimate for structured parking. And there was a question, so with structured parking, that would be factored into the overall development cost? That wouldn't be something that the town would be expected to do. The developer would put that into play. So mixed-use and mixed-income options do make tax credits challenging. Mixed-use is absolutely feasible, and we actually have seen a number of examples cropping up in our region. DHIC, which is a local nonprofit developer, they've done a mixed-use tax credit development in Durham, and we're actually evaluating an application for one in the town of Cary as well. So whereas previously, I would have said, mixed-use and tax credit doesn't really mix. It is feasible if you can find the right development partner who's willing to do the work. It's a math problem. So if they're willing to do the math, they can make it happen. Mixed income and tax credits don't mix. So if you want a true mixed-income development with unrestricted units, tax credits go out the window, but there may be some opportunities. If you can find the right split and the right level of density, the idea is that you could generate enough income through the market rate units to basically subsidize those affordable units, and it could minimize the amount of public investment that is needed to support those affordable units. But regardless, so we took a look at it under the assumption that if it did qualify for a 9% low-income housing tax credit award, even in those scenarios, mixed income, various levels of density, those scenarios would likely still result in funding gaps. They're at varying levels, and my math can always be checked, but we did find that there would need to be some level of public investment in order to make an affordable housing development feasible, regardless of density, specifically if it's 100% affordable. And the more deeply affordable you want to go, the more units serving people at 50% of the median income or 30% of the median income, the more subsidy is required. So really, what it comes down to is a question of what are the town's priorities? So is it placemaking? So this is in close proximity to the town center development that is planned. I think it's within walking distance, so very close by. So it's an opportunity to really piggyback and springboard off of that and continue placemaking, especially if you wanted to go for a mixed-use development, have some retail. I think this is really a good potential location for something with ground for retail. But is it also, are you really focused on homeownership? It is very, very challenging for first-time low-income homebuyers all throughout Wake County, particularly in Morrisville. And so is creating those opportunities and that generational wealth building, is that a top priority for the town? Is it unit count? Are you just trying to get as many units as you can on the site? Is it that depth of affordability? Are you comfortable serving people at 80% of the median income and below, or do you want to go lower? And finally, is it cost effectiveness? If cost effectiveness is the top priority, all of these can be balanced, right? But if cost effectiveness is the top priority, that limits the options for the site. And so really, that turns the question over to you all. I think you may, do I turn it back to you to drive? Yes. So I'm going to give it back to Josh, but those are some, some food for thought.
And I'll just wrap this up. Some caveats to everything that Mark just mentioned there. That was very high-level analysis, as he mentioned. Wake County did that with our UDO. This is just for the second portion, looking at something other than Habitat for Humanity. But it would require closer examination to fully understand the feasibility and the costs associated. And the next steps is with, obviously, further examination is, would be needed to look at site capacity, infrastructure requirements, and other things before we proceed. So from town council today, the questions and next steps. Does the town council want to move forward with the Habitat for Humanity project and pursue the funding opportunities outlined by Wake County? If yes, staff will conduct research to bring back potential funding models. Alternatively, does the town council want staff to assess the feasibility of a mixed-use or multifamily concept? If yes, staff will evaluate necessary road widens, review potential development models, consult with other departments, and ensure that development standards applicable to the site are fully reviewed. Councilmember Johnson.
I want to make sure I understood what you said. You said we go to a more of a multifamily, a non-housing. And we had a mix of market rate and affordable units that would make the project more desirable and could potentially get the low-interest funding. Can we repeat that for me, so I understand?
Sure, absolutely. So we'll start, so starting with just multifamily. So if you want to do 100% affordable, that would qualify for low-income housing tax credits. If you wanted to do mixed income with market rate units, you cannot use low-income housing tax credits. But it, that, it may not be required to make the project feasible.
Okay, thank you. That, that's the piece I want to make sure I understood. Because if you have some units at market rate, that can help subsidize the whole project and keep it, keep the other units affordable. Okay, I like that concept quite much. I, I think to be real honest... I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Is your mic on?
Thank you. It wasn't on. I apologize. I apologize. I was making noise before, so I shut it off. I'm sorry. So I, I like that concept of potentially looking at a mix of affordable and market rate so that it becomes a more desirable project and therefore possible. So I like that. I think, to be real honest, when we, when we talked about this in the past, the, the fact that, that we would have to invest so much of our own money was, I think, very problematic and for me personally. So I'm not sure that would happen anytime soon. And so if there is another avenue to get to what we want, which is more affordable, well, I should say what I want. What I want is more affordable units. I'm now leaning toward that kind of a concept. Of course, there's a lot, lot more to come. There's a lot of definition. There's a lot of, what does that mean? What does that look like? That, but now I am leaning toward that. And I know early on, we talked about, you know, going out to do some kind of RFP or RFQ, or whatever you want to call it, to work with affordable housing builders, and we chose not to do that. We chose to kind of focus on Habitat, because I would say personally, I, I give to Habitat. I worked on several of their homes, you know, here in Morrisville with, through my church. So I, I, they are an incredible organization, and I was hoping that that, we could get something to work. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of shifting now, thinking that maybe we should look in another direction. So does that, that helps you with those two questions? I guess I'm kind of a, maybe a no right now on the first question, and a yes on the mixed-use and multifamily concept and how we make this a successful and a, and a project that's really going to happen versus one that's, that may not.
Thank you.
I believe Member Fender with that.
Yes. So I believe a lot of my thoughts are in line with Councilmember Johnson. I was originally wanting, really wanting to go with Habitat. However, the, the cost, in addition to donating the land, is just too much at this time. Would like to look, I would like to work with Wake County and look at what other opportunities there are. Can you go to the next slide where it was the, yeah, that one? The, no. That one. Like what, for me, um, you know, I, I would, I would like for us to analyze what type of options there are with the, the mixed-use and affordability. You know, if it does need to be some units at market rate to offset the cost. However, I am interested in providing that homeownership opportunities for folks to provide that generational wealth. And not, you know, we've already talked about rental assistance, and we're, you know, through some conditional rezoning, we've provided affordable rental units. So I would like an opportunity to provide homeownership for folks if we can. And, you know, and I'm, I'm, I would like to stick to the 80% AMI just to make it more affordable for us. to make it more affordable for us. That makes sense, right? Less subsidy for us to provide.
Well, and I think one thing to consider is that the Town of Mooresville would, would not be the only entity providing subsidies. So we would encourage, so Wake County's top priority is 100% affordable developments and deeply affordable developments. And we have our development program to provide that subsidy to achieve those goals.
Okay. All right. So some combination of those priorities to look at for this solution.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Fender. I believe Councilmember Robby.
Yeah. I agree with both Townsmember Fender and Townsmember Johnson. I think that I would like to explore Habitat for Humanity one day in the future, but I think the, it makes more sense for a mixed multifamily project because it just, I think that that's something that will make it a more viable project that we can sell to the development community. I think we've already developed a really good standard with some of the more recent rezonings we've negotiated with, the 30 years, you know, when it was 15%, looking at some of the, you know, somewhat 60% AMI. And that's my goal. At the end of the day, I want a model that is enabling us to develop as many affordable units as possible across the entire town. And I think that that's a great way to begin because if we get, you know, and if it had been that we didn't have to require, I was always under the assumption that, I thank you for explaining why, that Habitat for Humanity would be like, it's a no brainer. If, you know, you just provide the land and then, you know, and then you build it. But, you know, it's, now I'm just curious though, what, these models that you've done, like with, when the towns do invest that public money, how many units, you had a slide up there, 75 units.
Could we go back to that slide? So I would point you all to Marigold Apartments, which is 126 units in Cary. This is a mixed income, non-tax credit. So they do have unrestricted market rate units, and it did still require over $30,000 a unit from Wake County. And I actually did not include, because it wasn't directly in the residential portion, but the Town of Cary contributed $2 million to infrastructure developments surrounding the site. So it's still not, I think that's kind of the caveat. With an appropriate level of density, the thought is there may be a way to have that kind of, we call it internal subsidy, where the market rate units do the subsidizing of the affordable units. But having mixed income is not necessarily a silver bullet. But we do, but then the remainder of these are 100% affordable. And so all of these, so Sportsmanship Way, that is free land from Wake County, and Wake County is the only gap financer. The Town of Holly Springs did, they agreed to a fee rate lock. And so I think that's one thing to consider as well. We would love to work with staff to explore other creative options to achieve cost savings and enhance project feasibility. And there are a lot of options out there. It was a fee rate lock. So they had a water and sewer fee, so it's no longer in place. It's a long story with this one. But initially, so of course in North Carolina, you know, your ability to waive fees is limited, but there are, the Town of Apex has consistently used fee reimbursements as a way to help fund developments. It's not always big dollars, but every little bit counts with affordable housing. So fee reimbursements, we had the fee rate locks. So understanding that some of these projects, especially if they're larger scale, it goes over a very long time horizon. And if you've projected fee rate escalations over time, you could potentially negotiate with a developer and say, we're going to keep you at the 2025 rate, and when you come online in 2027, you're, you're going to save, or whatever, you have to actually pay that fee. But I think I actually got away from your question. But I think, so Chappan Oak is City of Raleigh and Wake, and Wake County together. So we are both evaluating a gap financing application for that development. That's going to be a long-term ground lease. And then of course, the cottages of Idlewild, that's also City of Raleigh basically donating the land, and then Raleigh and Wake County combined providing gap financing. Takes a village.
So, so Mike, so the reason I was asking you that was then, like, I mean, well, let me ask you. So if we did a mixed use, higher density project, wouldn't it, given the trend that we've seen, wouldn't the number of units be more than 75 units? So, or did not necessarily?
We'd certainly, well, we'd certainly have to adhere to the development standards that we're confined to with that .86 parcel, .86 acreage. Not necessarily. And this might be a good segue to introduce some other very high level analysis that Wake County has done, looking at some potential options for this parcel. I do have a handout. I don't know if you think it's appropriate to pass that out right now.
Sure. That's my last question. I'm just trying to...
So I just want to say, I do want to echo Josh. This is very much kind of back of the envelope. You know, we did go through and take a look at some different scenarios. But I do not take the numbers here as gospel.
I think. So I think that was, I'm spot on on that. Like, I was thinking, mixed income rental and mixed use combination. I think that's what you're putting up here,
Everything here is rental. And these are different. So the first page really just shows density. Is it, it's level of density? Is it straight residential, or is it mixed use? And to achieve that, and so you look at, so the first two, surface parked, straight residential, you can get 35 units. If you wanted to do a surface park development that was mixed use, you would only be able to get 25 units, assuming a 5,000 square foot commercial space on the ground floor. And then going higher density, this is where you get into structured parking. So you need to have a parking deck above or below, or probably above between some sort of commercial development and then the residential, if you were going to do a mixed use. Or you would just have structured parking below the residential units if you went straight residential. And so the maximum that we thought, and this was also assuming some minimum unit sizes. So there are a lot of different angles you can go at if you want to start looking at smaller unit sizes. That might change the equation, but this was just to give a sense of what might be feasible on the site. And then we did, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
No, no, finish your thought, then.
Well, I can walk folks through the rest of these slides. So with some assumptions that doing a straight tax credit development and only the minimum required affordability. So that's 25% of units serving households at 30% of the area median income, so very low income folks. And then the remainder of units at 60% of the area median income. So if, and so this assumes just straight, straight line. If the developer were to pursue other funding sources from us at Wake County, or from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, or other funding sources, that might place additional restrictions that would maybe deepen affordability. It can, it can cause other changes. So we assumed that the maximum tax credit rents, so HUD sets the rent limits for loan compensing tax credit projects every year. And so the assumption is that the actual top of the rent range would be achievable at each of the income levels. So basically, you have the maximum income possible for the income restrictions. And again, yes, so this is, the loan compensing tax credit program excludes homeownership. This is rental only. So we assumed $300,000 a unit in total residential development costs. We came to this number by looking at some of the other projects that we have worked on. We assumed $325 a square foot for commercial development, based on some research that we did. Retail rent of $35 per square foot per year, triple net, so that's all utilities and operating costs passed on to the lessee. And then $5,600 per unit per year in residential operating expenses. And again, that's based on, we have kind of a portfolio of properties that we look at. So if you, based on that, we calculated what we thought the funding gap might be. And so most of these, so the middle one, the surface parked, mixed use, 25 unit development, it appears that it might not have a gap, but that may not actually be the case. So that's assuming that the financing doesn't need to be separated out for the residential and the commercial component, and that the commercial income can feed into paying off the debt for the residential component as well. But you can see, you have a range of different gaps. And you can see that if you go high density, you're going to end up with a fairly significant gap. So no matter what you do, I think that's kind of the takeaway. So in order to achieve 100% affordability, there does need to be some level of public investment.
And Mark, just for additional context, and again, understand completely high level, these do assume land donation.
Correct.
And do not account for the right of way dedication.
Correct. Yeah. So it assumes land donation. If there had been a land cost, there would be another potentially $20,000 to $25,000 a unit. I guess I, the land cost, but there would be additional costs in the total development cost.
I think I like these models. But the first question I have, if you have $5,000 retail space, will that be given at market rate so that you can consume that max into that model?
Correct. So this assumes that all of the retail space or commercial space would rent at $35 a square foot, which we, it's kind of prevailing market commercial rent in this area. There could be an option. If there is a town preference, for example, we've seen models where if there is a non-residential space, it's meant to be targeted for community group use or some kind of other community focused use. And so in those cases, it may be required to rent that space at a discount. But again, that's a priority that the town would set as the landowner.
Let me rephrase it. And I think you're helping me to get to what I'm trying to do is, if the 5,000 square feet can be used for town purposes, because we are paying, you know, the whole thing, and then basically for town offices could be used?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Perfect. Like, I meant to say, you know, land is a premium. If we are going this model, even I am in favor of these models, even though if it is 3 million, getting 60 units on this one, long shot. And I think we're done, you know, that basically gives, and I don't know how much chunking can be done over a period of time or something, but I think it will be a solid investment to showcase, is what I think.
Mayor Colley?
So let me start off by asking a question. The original number that we're needing to supplement was 787?
737,000.
737. Is that a ground lease model? Because I think, I've heard the Habitat has got a new model to reduce all the costs.
So I did discuss with Jackie, I'm sorry, I'm going to mispronounce her last name, last week, and she confirmed that that model that we, that you saw previously is still relevant and consistent with the numbers.
Okay, but she also told me that there's a new ground lease model that would reduce costs. So...
That may be, you probably have more information than me then. She simply confirmed the numbers for the pro forma that y'all had previously seen, but we did not discuss that.
Okay, if we could circle back with them and see.
Of course.
What new models they're using to make it more possible. And so 787 for 10 units. If you guys were, if Wake County was able to do $50,000 a unit subsidy, that'd leave us $25,000 each, which is $250,000 for these 10 units. Is that something that we just go forward with Habitat model as is? Would it be reasonable to expect that $50,000 a unit from Wake County is possible?
It is, it is absolutely hypothetically possible, depending on funding availability and timing. So it depends on when they're ready to move forward, when they can submit an application. We're wrapping up. So we, we received 21 applications at the end of January requesting $42 million in gap financing. So we're making decisions about what we can fund and what we can't, and we, we still have to see what's left over. But we top up every year. So if, you know, if moving forward in the remainder of this year, it's kind of a question mark. But if applying next year after we kind of refill our coffers, $50,000 per unit for a homeownership investment is consistent with the level of investment we've provided in other homeownership initiatives.
Okay. So to that end, I'd say yes to the first question. Let's keep on pursuing that and keeping that as an open possibility, because that was pretty ideal, I think. Because those are essentially townhomes, which is about the right density we're looking for there. It's not structured parking. So I'm very interested in the surface parking that says 25 units, and there's no gap. So that means you wouldn't have to supply more money, neither would we, correct?
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically.
Check my math, but...
So I'd be open for something like that. I'd be a little bit leery of anything that would, the structured parking that, because historically, the council, when we actually get the final number, we maybe step back a little bit. So I don't want to go down, keeping all options open, but I don't want to eliminate the ones that we've already got going. So yes, and I'd like to continue with this, essentially is where I am. That's my thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Robbey?
She's out. She's out. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I agree that the 25, 35 unit pieces are more desirable. I don't really, I'm not really interested in anything with a structured parking.
We're having a little trouble actually hearing you. If you could go back to the way you were talking first time through?
Can you hear me now?
Much better. Thank you.
Okay. I said I agree that the 25 and 35 unit, unit buildings would be more in line with what I would like to see there. I'm not really interested in anything with a parking garage. But I do like the fact that the, the surface parking mixed use development has 5,000 feet of commercial space. I think that that is really nice. And to Mayor Pro Temps' point, if we could use the commercial space, I mean, we do need it. So that would be, to me, that would be a win-win.
I'm so sorry, Councilmember Robbey. You started to fade away there. Can you say the last sentence or two again for me?
I said I agree with Satish about the commercial space possibly being valuable for the town. We need it too.
And so I think on that note, I think if, would the town be interested in just trying to have free access to the commercial space or renting it at market rent?
Oh, is there an option to get it free?
With the developer.
I mean, since we're donating the land, I think we would like to get it at least at a reduced rate.
And so I think it would be something that could be potentially broached with a development partner if you were going this route. But the, the lack of gap in this model is really dependent on that commercial space income. So the less income that flows into that, that creates a potential gap.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, well, I feel like that's a bridge that we could cross when we come to it. But I do, but that's my, of all the options, I do like the surface parking mixed use development the most.
Thank you, Councilmember Robbey. Did any other council members have any other
So I meant to say, this model is based on like tech model, right? Like everything? How about a mixed, like, what is that word I use? Like, mixed use and also, what is the?
Income.
Mixed income. Give it to a private developer, and then we get half units, say, affordable, and half, he can do it, say, suppose 60 units, 30, 30, just throwing it out. So how does that model look like?
So I haven't done that math, but I'd be interested to explore that. It's not a guarantee, but there may be some possibility there. I will always advocate for as much affordable housing as you can get.
Absolutely. Like, the only key I was basically coming to is, I like the commercial component only because this is downtown, eventually is getting developed, and that is a gateway. So whatever we put there is on Marshall Carpenter. So it'll kind of blend in well, is my thought process, like, long-term. And once this goes, it is for the next 30, 40 years, you know, that is what it is. So I'd rather be, you know, think about it right now, like, you know, the right model, and then that will only help us in the future. That, that was, I was thinking, like, you know, if the cost is an issue, but the building as such with commercial component would be nice. But I get your point. I know you're pitching for, and I would love to, but I was looking from the modeling point of view, that's all. Thank you.
I think I've received the guidance I need. Brittany Michelle.
I'd like to make one more comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fender.
So I would like to add, I guess, based on what the mayor was saying, you know, my preference would be that if, um, you know, if you are to go back to Habitat and see if the total amount is reduced based on if there's some new model, and then we are able to get the, the 50,000 per unit, that would be my first choice, because that's the homeownership. Whereas this option is, is all rentals.
Correct.
So, um, you know, the Habitat option may be more of a long shot, but that still would be my preference.
Mayor Colley?
And I piggyback on that, the multifamilies and stuff, mixed use or not, I am less interested in having more rental. I would really like to know if it's any possibility to make them condos. I know that we'd lose the Lytec opportunity, but I'd love to pencil that out as well. Because I know developers aren't big on condos, but this is our land and it's our project. So I think having some condos would be better than rent, more rental apartments. Would be my preference. But I piggyback on her, that I very much would like the Habitat to be the first thing that we make sure that we keep trying.
So to summarize, thank you, Mayor. Oh, yes, Councilmember Robotti.
I agree with that. I, I mean, I would prioritize anything that, where there's homeownership over rental, 100%. I thought, I guess I thought we were clear on that. But if it needs to be said, then I agree with that.
Sorry, Councilmember, you broke up again. We missed the last part. You said you prioritize homeownership?
I s- Yes, I said I, I guess I thought we were all on the same page there, but if it needs to be said, then I agree with that. That if there's a way that it can be home ownership, even if it's a condo, I would much prefer that to a rental.
Thank you, Councilmember. So to kind of recap, there's, there's been a few different things thrown out today. I know an RFP by Councilmember Johnson was mentioned. Staff have discussed that internally as well, seeing if there's issue with an RFP, seeing if there's any interest from the private development community to Mayor Pro Tem Garamella's point. Sounds like we want to also explore, go back to Habitat, talk to them about what the mayor discussed, see if there is some new numbers that are available for different funding. And also, Town Council seems interested in some of the models that Mark talked about as well from Wake County. So it sounds like they all look good, is the conclusion.
Yeah, and to kind of, kind of go along with what Josh has said there, so I think that our first step will be to circle back with Habitat for Humanity. If the number has significantly changed with the new model, then we will bring that back. If that model has not changed in a significant manner, then we will move forward with some sort of mixed-use condition and prioritizing condos if that is feasible. Is that consistent, or?
If they're able to do the 50,000, that also keeps Habitat on the table.
Okay.
And I do want to say, so this is not a forward commitment of funding. So Habitat would need to apply for funding and all that, so just want to make sure.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Good work, team. I know it's been a long time to get us to this point, we really appreciate it. At this point, Councilmember Rao is asked to be excused from the meeting, so we'll take a vote for that, because he has another commitment he has to make it to. I entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Rao. A motion from Mayor Pro Tem Garamella. A second from Councilmember Fender. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 5-0. Thank you all very much. Thank you for joining us for the first part of the meeting.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
It's all fine. How long do you need? 10 minutes? Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break at this time. We're going to switch to the next part of our work session tonight, which will be roundtables. Please reconvene at 8:12.
Thank you, Mayor. So now we go into the roundtable discussion. You have been provided with a summary of the tracking sheets that had the round, has the roundtables that were previously presented and the updates on all of those items that remain open, the ones that have been completed, and the ones that are inactive. We will not review that document right now. You have it as part of, as part of the packet. Before we move into the new items, do a quick check. Is there any questions on any of the items that were previously presented? Okay, so let's move on to the new items that have been submitted. We have we have about eight items that were submitted, new items that were submitted, and then we will go in order from the, from the top to the bottom. So the first two items on the list are the two items introduced previously by Councilmember Fender. If you would like to discuss your, your two items?
Sure. So the first item has to do with recycling at our retail and commercial businesses. We currently, like I noticed this, I've noticed this when I'm out and about in Morrisville, that it's inconsistent. A lot of times, there's no place to recycle. You know, I always have a Diet Coke can in my hand, and I usually have to take it home to be able to cycle. So I was just gonna suggest if our staff could look into, if there was a way that staff could work with our businesses of, and look at ways that we could help them with recycling. Trying, I'm trying not to come up with a solution.
Any questions from council?
So can I add on to that? I think this is a good partnership with the chamber. So you're talking, because I guess the first time I read this, I thought about, you're not talking about waste hauling recycling, because they do do that recycling, but you're talking having receptacles on their, in their locations that would accommodate recycling for customers?
Yeah, because I don't think they have waste, they only have hauling for cardboard, from what I've seen.
I don't know.
They don't have any recycling where they haul away for cans and bottles like we do for residential.
So I don't know about that. I don't, I don't, that's, that's a good question.
Like I've seen, I've always seen like the dumpsters outside of apartment buildings for cardboard and other. But yeah, I was thinking like if, okay, like as an example, potential is if our sustainability coordinator had some sort of standard receptacle that they could go around and put in retail businesses that wanted to participate, and then Public Works comes around and, and retrieves, or retrieves the, the bottles or cans, but something like that. But yeah, putting in the receptacles in the businesses.
More as a town-provided services, drive service. I'm trying to get clarity on what your proposal is.
Well, I'm trying not to give a solution, but maybe work with the businesses to find what is preventing them from recycling and help them figure out what the best way for them to recycle. It doesn't necessarily have to be a town service. You know, I'm not trying to add more work or add an additional service that the town needs to provide, but work with the businesses for them to figure out what's the easiest for them. Is there a reason why they're not doing it?
So, so thank you for that, because that, yeah, I'm, that's, so can we partner with the chamber then? That's where I was starting to go when I said that, and have that, maybe that's a place to start with chamber and ask them to help us and communicate to their membership. I know that's not everybody in town, but that might be a place to start and to encourage recycling.
I mean, we're all about, you know, working with our residents and trying to increase, you know, our, our residents' participation in recycling, but then we have all these businesses that are not recycling at all. So that's a tremendous amount of waste, or, you know, well, waste that's going into, solid waste that doesn't need to go there.
Mayor, go on.
Yeah, I'm very supportive, and there might be like the equivalent of Compost Now. There might be a company out there that will help businesses, or there might be best practices by another municipality that's kind of looked at this and found a good way to do it. So, I mean, this is not solutioning. This is just asking staff to look into it further, and I'm very supportive of that.
I'm having a hard time because I, I get what Donna is asking, you know. At AT&amp;T, we had recycling. At GSK, now we have recycling. So I understand the cardboard might be a dumpster, but we do not know if they're doing. But I'm assuming when I put a recycling or, you know, the trash, they are taking it to recycling and not mixing it together. But, but when, in my office, there is recycling and trash separate. So, and we are commercial, like, you know. So I think it would be good just to figure it out, because they are doing it. I know that.
Well, you go to the tire place or auto mechanic. They're not doing it.
I'm talking about the Class A offices.
Yeah, but that's not business, that's not.
That is business. Yeah, so yeah, something.
So maybe some, some aren't. So we want to encourage everybody to, to recycle as much.
Not every little individual business, yeah.
Councilmember Robati?
Yeah, I think this is also something where we could leverage the Stormwater and Environmental Advisory Committee to, you know, I mean, they can go around and talk to businesses too. And I think, yeah, I think it's a great idea. I'm in support.
Okay, a whole campaign to, anyhow, you could do lots of things. Campaign, a whole campaign to recycle. I mean, you have to get it on people's radar, too. I mean, you know, I, I think, don't assume everybody recycles or everybody knows the value of recycling. I think you can do a whole campaign to educate the community, so. And I know we have done that before. The Environmental Committee has, has done this, and this is on their radar, but yeah, we can add to it.
Sounds like there is consensus to support and direct staff to investigate. Yes? Okay. Councilmember Fender, you can present your other item.
All right. So this one, I realize is a little bit further out there, but hear me out. So, um, I would propose that we look into banning the use of gas-powered leaf blowers within the town limits. And the way that I would propose us doing this is working with, do it as part of, well, work with our surrounding communities so we're not alone. And I came up with this idea because I heard that the Environmental and Stormwater Committee was already talking to Apex about this same thing. And, and we could do it as you start advertising, like, we're gonna do this in a year or two years. So people are ready for it, and they know it's coming. You know, other communities are doing it. Granted, they're all in California, but, you know, we know how much pollution, especially the ones that are used by contractors that are old. And anyway, I hate those things, and I would love to see all of the, all of the gas-powered leaf blowers banned and out of use, especially with all of us working from home. When those things go off and I'm on a conference call, it's very distracting.
Question, comments from councilmembers?
I'm supportive of looking into it further, especially if there's interest in Apex. But I'd be willing to look at it just in Morrisville as we try to become even greener.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, I, I use only battery-powered equipment at home. We, we've gotten rid of our gas, everything gas. So I only use lawn mower, leaf blower, I don't, oh yeah, we do have a leaf blower, even, or even our other equipment for trimming the, I trim my own trees, and it's all battery-powered. But I have a, I chose that. That was my choice. So I have, and this is just my kind of philosophy. I, I don't, I would much rather encourage and bring people along than, and I'm just gonna use this expression, and I know, Donnie, you don't mean it this way, I would, than use a hammer to hit somebody over the head. And I know that's not what you're saying, but I can't figure out another way to say it. So I would prefer to do like a, again, an educational campaign and, you know, explain to folks why it's important and help them get, I didn't get any discounts, but I don't know if there's any discounts or, you know, grant opportunity or whatever to help people, you know, convert their equipment. I would, that's kind of the approach I would take. I'm not sure we even have the authority to do this. That's why I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I want staff to kind of run down this. I think if elected officials want to talk about it and try to gather support for it, and that's fine, but I'm not even sure we have the authority to do it. So actually, I'm pretty sure we don't.
Yeah, no, I think, I'm thinking the same way, because I understand the essence of where you're coming from. But if I'm looking in the futuristic, all the landscapers and all those things, you know, they'll may just, their lobbyists will go and file a bill tomorrow, like ETJ is happening, or anything is happening.
There's a lot of things.
A lot of things happening. So I don't know if we have really the authority to ban that, but we can, I'm kind of curious what Apex is trying to do, because that's what are, you know, are they trying to ban it? I don't know. Do you have any data on that? So, so I would, my recommendation is, you know, look if we have jurisdiction to do these things or not, even before we go further, because then the other one is still a very long battle, but can we do it? I think that's, that's the best, I think.
Councilmember Robati?
Is our, is our town leaf blowing equipment gas-powered?
Hello?
We may, we may need to check, because we have contractors that work for us as well, and there is, you will have contractors that have battery power, but you will have others that will have gas-powered.
Well, I do think that a good start would be to give priority to, I mean, I think this, I think this is a good idea. I mean, to Stacey and Liz's point, I think we should check whether we have the authority to do it first. That would be a good first step. But I do think that at the town level, we should prioritize contractors that are gonna use electric equipment. I mean, that to me would be the first step, because we can't talk about banning, you know, about banning gas-powered leaf blowers and then have contracts with people that use gas-powered leaf blowers. So I'd also like to look, I mean, I'm a yes on this, but I'm also a yes and. Let's put our money where our mouth is.
See, I thought we were already doing that, but I didn't realize we had contractors.
We do have a lot of contractors that do our landscaping maintenance in the right of ways, and some of our facilities as well.
And my other thought process, if I'm thinking, all the HOs and others, they landscape, you know, so the moment they say do battery, the HOs usually will just go off the sky. And, and some are, some batteries are not even possible, because the ones that highway people do on that, that's all gas, you know. So few, so again.
What was that, the highway?
On, on like, you know, the state roads.
Forty, five forty.
Now, where we have Church Street, not Church Street, like, you know, this one, Lou Stephen and others, like they can come once in a month with their tractors, and they do have those edges.
Well, I'm just talking about leaf blowers. Just leaf blowers.
Yeah, so I think then I'll stick to the landscapers, because it's like, how much, I don't know. So that will also, one thing to do, but find out about the.
So Councilmember Fender, based on, on the initial request that you presented, doesn't sound like there is consensus to support a banning of the use of leaf blower. Based on what you've heard, with the level of authority, checking what others are doing, would you like to revise your request?
I could go back and, and look at it, revise.
I mean, what I'm saying is, if you would like to.
Wait a second.
If you would like to, for staff to consider some of what has been discussed already, you can amend it right now, based on what you have heard.
What is, what is Ann, what is Councilmember Robati saying?
Well, I was just gonna say that, in fact, I think we do have consensus to go forward on this idea. I, I think we're, I mean, how many of us are on the meeting right now?
Yeah, my, my point is, my point is that.
We're dying here.
The, the way the item is presented is that Councilmember Fender would like to request that we ban the use of leaf blowers, and.
Right, which there is actually support for, if we have the authority to do it. So that's what I'm saying, is that obviously the direction is to find out if we have the authority to do it. If we don't, then I guess we won't. But I do think there was, there was not consensus, but a majority of opinion that staff could look into it.
If we had authority.
Yeah, if we have authority.
Yeah, so that would be the first step, before even we say we are having consensus on the whole thing, you know. Then we can come back and see what is the plan, those kind of things, because I don't want to put a.
Exactly.
Sounds good. Councilmember Robati, you have the next two items. If you would like to introduce your items?
Okay, great. Are we having any trouble hearing me now? I know there was some trouble earlier.
We can hear you very well now.
Okay, great. So my first item is the, a potential transportation advisory committee. And the reason that I started thinking about this was because I spoke to a resident who I'm quite sure is in the room right now with you all, and he had such a fresh take on the shuttle and the, and walkability. And it got me thinking that maybe as a council, we don't know everything there is to know about how people are trying to get around in this town, and what the barriers to that are, and what some potential solutions might be. And so I thought that if there was an advisory committee, that first of all, they could help us with things like the transit surveys and stuff like that, and the smart shuttle surveys that Caleb is planning to do. But also, I think that they. But also I think that they could, especially if we gave them a really tight charter to answer questions that we need answered and to come up with plans that we want and report back, I think that it could be valuable for the town to get some perspectives from people that are using modes of transportation that we don't use and in ways that we don't use them. So that is my idea.
Comments, discussion from council members?
So can I, can I make a suggestion, Ann? So we're going through a, a survey right now, um, for the smart shuttle, I know specifically. I, would it be okay to come back and revisit this once we finish that, that, the, we come out the other end of the survey? I think I, and I realize this is more than the short smart shuttle that you're talking about, I, I hear that. But, um, I'm, I'm hopeful that we're gonna get a lot of really good input and that we can use that input to inform us about how to not only move, well, obviously move forward with the smart shuttle, but maybe even capture some of what you're saying. So, um, I, I would ask that we maybe give the public the opportunity to weigh in as a whole and then come back and, and revisit, even if we called it a task force or a, a task force or an advisory committee and then have, I would have, I would probably have a better understanding about how, how to give a group direction.
So I do appreciate your point there, Liz, but I, I guess my feeling is that if this survey is anything like our other surveys, it, we're gonna get seven or eight responses and they, and the responses that we get, no doubt, will be helpful. But I think that we could, we could task an advisory committee or a task force with more specific questions like, because a survey about transportation isn't gonna capture people that, that aren't using transportation for some reason that's not clear to us or that aren't using the greenways because of some reason, like they're not connected at this certain spot, you know, stuff like that. And I'm just thinking from, from a point of view of like, we're almost built out, we have some projects coming up, we, you know, I think personally think the time is now. I, if, if everybody else wants to wait, I'm also fine with that, but, you know, so my preference would be to go forward. But, you know, if everybody else wants to wait, I completely understand that.
Councilmember Fender?
And plus, I think it would take time to get a task force up and, I mean, a task force or an advisory committee up and running. Like, we couldn't even do it until the next election cycle and I'm not, I'm not exactly sure when that is. I think it's not till summer.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Councilmember Fender?
I would like for us to look at it because it's not just the smart shuttle, it's greenways, our roads. You know, it's everything.
Like, viability is something else I'd like them to explore, like that's.
Right. Especially, I mean, like, what do we do now with our roads with all of the, um, DOT projects continuing to get pushed back? You know, McCrimmon Parkway is widening, is pushed back, aviation gets pushed back. You know, it wouldn't hurt to go ahead and start looking at our, uh, transportation holistically.
Mayor Colley?
Yeah, I, I'm supportive of staff looking into the possible formation of a committee. I think right now we're in the middle of the alternative transit study and I think we're gonna get a real feel for how engaged we can get our community. And those people that really step up and share their thoughts might be possible members of that committee if we end up forming it. There's lots of pros and cons of committees, there's lots of admin around it, we'd need a really tight charter. We usually set those up just once and I think we want to be really flexible, so it would have to be kind of a new, more agile committee, I think, as things change. But I'd be supportive of.
Or like Liz said, a task force.
Yeah, we did a Blue Ribbon Trust Course on transportation before me even.
Years ago.
Many years ago. So it might be good to have staff just sort of take a look at that, what the outcome was and whether it was beneficial, whether or not that might be a format instead of an ongoing committee. So, but yeah, I give it a heads up to have staff at least look into it a little bit more and they can give us some, some of their thoughts about how beneficial it could be.
Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pretend Gary Mella?
Okay. I'm always a little scared when I hear advisory committees because I, you know, floated the education advisory committee and it went a different direction. But going back to what Donna is talking about, like, you're talking about roads and the committee says we need to build roads or do this one and that is what will come out and we have pretty much not in our hand that will, it's, I don't know where we'll go with that because many of the authorities, we don't have it. It's a, okay, aviation needs a walkway. Okay, I agree too. And I, I also want to know when is the CTP, next CTP? It's almost across like a comprehensive transportation plan. That will address a lot of these issues, which are the gaps, orphans, whatever it is as on a comprehensive, including the walkable, including the bikes and everything that is coming. So, um, so I, I, as much as I like the concept, but this whole advisory committee is, we're very, we're very small. If it was rally or something big, it's just, we're only nine to 10 square miles. And we are almost restricted to what we can really build more or even enhance. So a, a task force could be, but I don't think an advisory committee, it's, is not a whole lot of work there after the initial, you know, findings, which anyway will be coinciding with the comprehensive transportation plan, which is almost due for updates.
We also had a.
Well, I think that.
Go ahead, Ann, sorry.
I was just gonna say that I think that, that things that we would find out from an advisory committee, like the one I'm proposing, would, could be into our discussions of that our transportation plan.
True, but as part of the CTP, they have a very comprehensive, they go across the entire neighborhoods and have all kinds of sessions, input sessions, what they want. So that's pretty, pretty comprehensive, like, uh, hands-on kind of, I think they have a lot of exercises that they do too. So, um, will the advisory committee be able to do over and beyond what CTP, you know, framework does? I don't know the answer to it.
Well, that's why we would ask staff to find out.
Yeah, so I think, um, so what I was gonna say, when, so the, the, anytime we do these big comprehensive plans, we do an update to them, whether it's parks and rec, land use, transportation, we never rely on a committee to do the work. We rely on getting input from the town overall. So I think we have to be kind of sensitive to that, to not send any kind of mixed messages out to the community, because it's important that everybody input. So, and everybody feel like their input's gonna matter and that we're gonna take it under, council's gonna take it under advisement. So I would say that. The other thing I would say is that, um, I think we, and I agree, Ann, we, in the past, sometimes we've done surveys and got really, um, not really good results back. And I would tell you, um, I'm, I'm encouraged with the senior survey that ju, we just undertook this past month. It was only to really the senior community and yet we had, they got a tremendous response. I don't know what the final response was, but, um, at their special, the senior advisory committee special called meeting, um, which was what, a week ago, they, they talked about 140 responses. And honestly, I think that was because there was a concerted effort, not only by our staff, but by the senior advisory committee members and the seniors themselves. So, um, so I think our, not all, I just want to make the point, not all our surveys are poorly, 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 I was gonna say attended, that's not the right word, are poorly used. We, we have, we have successful surveys. I haven't seen the results of this one yet, but I'm, I'm sure it's gonna be good information too.
Mayor?
I guess I'd say, um, if you're willing to open it up to more than just an advisory committee, maybe asking staff to look at the timelines of what's going on around transportation, like when the CTP will be, this alternative transit plan, it's gonna go through end of '25, where a task force would fit, whether you might think of creating a CTP working group. So we're reaching the whole community, but there might be a smaller subgroup of people who are really digging in and having more group meetings about it and sort of being the people who are really interested in doing it, almost like a task force, a little looser. Because I think there might be support for just having staff look into it a little bit more. So that's just my thoughts.
I, I'm okay with amending it to transportation advisory committee or task force. Maybe it should even say transit advisory committee or task force. But anyway, I, I'm open to that.
Mayor Pretend Gary Mella, your flag is up. Wasn't sure if you were still.
I, I, I think, you know, I, I am okay with the task force, but certainly not the advisory committee because it, it, it goes a different direction, especially for the transportation section. In a senior, yes, we have things underneath our hand, we can do a lot of things. With transit or transportation, we are struggling ourselves. So every time they'll come and say, okay, this is what our people are saying, this is what our people are saying. We know that. The feedback, we do annual feedback every year or every four years, the.
Townwide survey.
A townwide survey.
Satisfaction survey.
Satisfaction survey.
So we can wrap that one?
So, yeah, like, if a task force, look into it, but I don't know at what time because CTP will coincide with all these things.
Yeah, CTP updated will soon start.
Head nods from the planning director.
So let me confirm, sounds like I have one for task for ma, mayor for task force. And councilmember Fender. Thank you. Councilmember Robati, would you like to discuss your next item?
He can't hear you.
Councilmember Robati, you can discuss your next item.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, so this one's on a much smaller scale, but we got an email several weeks ago from a person that, that didn't feel like, that felt like we were celebrating everybody's cultural holidays and we weren't celebrating theirs. And it got me thinking, like, in what way could we, could we be more inclusive in that way that wouldn't be a huge lift? And I thought that maybe there could be a place on the website where you could enter your cultural holiday and give some information about it and that we could, like, we could just promote it on social media, right? Generally an easy lift. And then that could be a pipeline into if, like, if, let's say we, we talked about this person specifically had a Japanese holiday. Let's say we talked about that Japanese holiday and it turned out that there was tons of interest and support in that and our social media posts about it got tons of responses, you know, then we could do a small event like we just did the lantern making this past time for Chinese New Year. So it would kind of be like a first step in identifying different cultural holidays that might be celebrated in town. And if it's only a social media post every year, it doesn't have to go any further, but it might also turn into something really cool.
Oh, I'm good with that.
Comments?
Can, can, you know, Ann, when I read, I'm sorry?
Mayor, just for your awareness, councilmember Vicki Scruggins-Johnson has now joined the meeting virtually.
Hello?
Okay, I, I'm okay. So yes, and I wonder, Rox just showed us that rep app or not, it's not an app, that.
Feature.
Feature, thank you, thank you. The other day, and I, I wonder how that could even tie into this, where, you know, there could be, I don't know. I, I, yeah, I don't want to give a solution either, but yes.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, I agree with staff looking at ways to integrate additional international holidays.
Mayor Colley?
Ditto, expanding possibly and if Parks and Rec has capacity and bandwidth and feels that it's a good idea, I think it's good to move forward with this one.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have one more. I'm gonna add this, because I want to add it. I think this is a, because I've said it before, I'm gonna say it a couple more times every time I can. I think this is a, an absolute opportunity for our international festival to incorporate as many holidays and cultures and diverse whatever that we can. And I, I, I think this ties in with that, to make sure that everyone feels included and welcomed, so, yes.
Councilmembers, Scruggins-Johnson?
Hello, good evening, everybody. Um, I, my apologies, I had to work late this evening, but I do want to weigh in on this item. I, I like the idea of getting more input from our public and getting more ideas and suggestions about the various holidays. I think that will build a very robust awareness and opportunity for the town. But I like the idea of the international festival to kind of also complement this. And this will definitely give us a line of sight of different opportunities that we have. I don't know if we can, you know, like, have an activity for every suggestion kind of thing, but it will give us an opportunity to review and prioritize.
Councilmember Robati?
Yeah, I'm 100% not proposing a, an event for every holiday, but actually though, when you, when you talk about the international festival, another thing is that, um, if we wanted, so, you know, a holiday pops up and we realize we have a community that we hadn't considered, and then we could, you know, like, we could go back to the person that proposed that holiday and say, hey, do you want to have a booth or would someone you know want to have a booth, you know, at international festival? You know, like, I mean, a person that would propose something like this, I think, might be the type of person that would be a spokesperson for a community. So, I mean, that's, that actually would be a really great tie-in.
Councilmember Fender, do you have any other comments? Mayor Pretend Gary Mella?
No, I think it's, it's a great idea and I agree with Liz. I want, when you say international festival, more than it, I want to see more cultures too, personally, because there's a lot of Turkish festivals and all these several, you know, there's, uh, I think the beer, Oktoberfest kind of things and so many things on there. So I think it would be awesome to have that, not getting into that, but at least start something somewhere.
Well, I heard plenty of support to move this one forward.
Good one, Ann.
Okay, the next item on the round table is Mayor Colley's.
Okay, uh, this is kind of bringing back the possibility of discounted memberships for, to MFC for specific groups. When last brought up, there was questions about whether or not.
When last brought up, there was questions about whether or not Wake County Public Schools would be even interested, reached out to Chair Hagerty, who spoke to his staff and they reached back out and said, yes, they'd be very interested in looking into this. Also, there was a concern about whether or not we even have capacity. I checked with our staff and we do have capacity, so not solutioning or anything, just asking for council support to look into the possibility of possibly some kind of pilot program to support Wake County school teachers and staff from Wake County. So there's lots more words up there, but that's pretty much the gist, just a small, have staff look into it and talk to Wake County staff who's also interested.
Before I open it up for comments, as Mayor Colley mentioned, this was an item introduced in July 2023 and it was resolved on 20, on June 2024 with the information that we had received that Wake County Public School staff indicated that they did not want to limit a benefit to a portion of the, of their staff. So we closed that item, it's being reintroduced, just wanna, wanted to share that, because it has been previously brought forward, so.
Could I just clarify that? Because it's my understanding that it was brought to them as it would just be for teachers and they were not interested in that, that was not the ask. The ask was for Wake County Public School employees. So that's why I think it got stopped, because then there was a no from Wake County, but it was kind of an incorrect ask because of miscommunication or misinterpretation of the original ask, so.
Can you remove whatever is, I can't read that. Okay, better. Now, okay, and can you blow it up a little bit, if you can?
And to answer that, I do have that the completed item previously reported, the outreach was to Wake County Public School Systems.
And that they said it didn't want to be just for teachers.
They indicated that they would not entertain a benefit for only a portion of their employees.
So can I, can I?
Vicki is first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Council member Scruggins-Johnson?
Thank you. I also am having a little challenge on the, the font size, but, so, Mayor Colley, why did you select the Wake County Public School System specifically? Because there are a lot of teachers, Sterling Montessori, there are Wake Tech, you know, instructors, there's healthcare workers. I, I'm not sure why you selected this population. And when you contacted the, the Wake County Public School System, what was your conversation? Was it about them adding a benefit in their HR packet for all employees that they could have a discounted membership to the Morrisville MAFC? I'm not clear on why or what was the objective, because this is very solution. And I think from a strategic standpoint is, we want to be good partners, we want to have, you know, support, you know, healthcare workers or, or teachers or government workers. There's a lot of different populations we could support, but the end of the day, the MAFC is not a large facility. And also, I'm not really clear on what discount you were thinking of. Did you want to offer a resident rate, a senior rate? I mean, there's a, there's a lot of consideration for that as well, so maybe you could just elaborate a little bit more?
Sure, the idea is just to keep it really high level and see if we want staff to interface with Wake County Public School staff who've indicated some interest. My initial reach out to Chris Hagerty was in response to the fact that there's members of this council who weren't sure if they even wanted this benefit, if they'd be interested. So I did that, he was like, yes, we have people who actually do that. That staff reached back out to me and I said, okay, pause, now that you have indicated some interest, I'm gonna push this back and bring it back to the council again. So that's where we are. The amount of discount, anything like that, whether or not it's a pilot program to just a small group, whether or not it gets expanded to Wake Tech as well, that's to be explored. So I'm trying to do my very best to just keep it really high level and see what staff would come back with as options and alternatives for the council to consider. Does that help answer some of your questions?
It does, but I, I feel like we are not supporting teachers if we say that only if you're a Wake County Public School teacher can you have this benefit. I'm not sure I support the benefit, I'm just thinking that this is a very narrow, you know, we have teachers in, in different schools in our town that are not Wake County Public Schools. And this is a, to me, this is a bigger, you know, it should be a bigger ask, not just one entity, so.
Happy to amend the ask to expand it to whatever you support.
Well, I'm not asking to expand it, I'm just saying that it's very narrow and, and this becomes a bigger discussion about rates. And, and that's not what you're trying to do tonight, you're just trying to see if there's interest. So I'll stop there and I'll let others speak, thank you.
Council member Fender?
I'm not in favor. Like Vicki said, our facility's not that big, we have rates, I mean, it's primarily for residents and we have a rate for non-residents. We subsidize a lot of facility as it is. I mean, if we open it up to Wake County employees, you know, you know, then what? It's not, it's not a free-for-all, so just keep it as it is.
Council member Johnson?
So, we already, I, I agree with Donna, we already offer resident rate at a discount, we have a non-resident rate at a higher rate, obviously, we even have a senior resident rate that's discounted. We're also going through a cost recovery conversation now in Parks and Rec and the idea is to recover expenses. So this goes against all that and so, and I question, I, I would like to hear from our staff about capacity, how much there is or isn't. And you, you open the floodgates here, there'll be no capacity for our residents and right now, that's the problem already. We have programming in our Parks and Recs, both at the senior center and at the Aquatics and Fitness Center, that residents are, are questioning if they're given priority. So I don't want to go down this road either, right, or ever.
Council member Rabadi?
Well, I was just gonna say that we, I mean, there's, there is some precedent for, for the WCPSS thing in that we just literally made the same decision about affordable housing. So that is one thing, like, if we were going to do this, I do agree that we should start with a small population, but the, I hadn't really considered, I, I actually was supportive of this item, but I hadn't considered the capacity of the Aquatics and Fitness Center, because, like, you can't get into a yoga class over there, you can't get into a pickleball thing, I mean, it's, it's rough out there already. So I, just because of that, which is a really good point, I think, I think that I wouldn't be in favor, but I really do wish that we had more space over there.
Mayor Potem Garymala?
We keep on talking about Wake County Public Schools, but when I read the packet here, it says discounted or free visits or membership to Wake County Public Schools, veterans and senior residents. Just attending the previous senior center meeting, I was told we have 14% population of our Marshall, seniors, I did the calculation, it's 4,500 people. If you're just, worst scenario, you're giving free, you're talking about $1.45 million. Because when you say it's free, it's for everyone, there's, they can come at any point of time and space is the biggest concern. We are already seeing with the seniors that just because they need more space, we, we are looking at other options. I want MAFC to be do what MAFC is, because by opening up all these things, this is, like, for me, when I look at MAFC, is where the kids go swim, they learn and it's a beautiful pool. I don't know, by opening this up, you know, will lose the whole, I think the capacity is the key, because even, even if the staff said they have capacity now, I'm not looking for now, I'm looking at the growth, because we will not have one more MAFC later. So I want to ensure that for the next five, 10 years, there is some kind of a capacity, because that's what it is, they, we can't afford to build one more MAFC. I would not, I'm not in support of it.
I've heard your concerns about capacity and things like that, so that would have been a step that staff could look into it and see, not talking about opening up the floodgates and telling every senior that they now have a free membership to MAFC. The whole idea was to maybe take a look and see if there's a pilot program, maybe just giving out some free passes to teachers, the idea being that, where I grew up, the teachers lived in the town, so we interacted with the teachers, they were our neighbors, things like that. We don't have as much of that here in Morrisville, we have teachers who live outside of Morrisville, this would be an opportunity for them to enjoy one of our facilities next to their students, next to their families. So that's where this first originated and I was just hoping for support to look into it a little bit more and apparently that support isn't there. So I appreciate you guys and your thoughts and your perspective.
Thank you. Next roundtable items, we have two items by council member Johnson.
So I'm, I'm gonna be really quick. And for, for Anne and Vicki at home, I, I just passed out a proclamation that we just read back in January about establishing a small business New Year's resolution for 2025. And we talked about how we're gonna be conscious about supporting small businesses in the town of Morrisville and we're encouraging others to do the same. So my ask is just that, that's exactly what we do internally, that we make an effort and if we need a policy, that's fine, but to make an effort to really buy local and buy in Morrisville. And, and I'm gonna add, I didn't put this in my write-up, but as a caveat, I realize not everything we need is here in the town of Morrisville. And, and potentially not, those things that are here in the town of Morrisville may not be what, exactly what we need, the quality, the, and of course, at, at the cost that we needed at. So I realize that, so there are caveats to this, but I think we should be much more intentional about buying local, especially when it comes to like food and, you know, when we're providing food and drink at events, at public meetings, I don't, you know, we don't need to be buying stuff outside of Morrisville when it's right here. That's really what it's all about.
Council member Rabadi?
Agree.
Mayor Colley?
I actually thought we were already doing this. No, we're not, that's why I brought it up. And it has bothered me that we're not.
It's kind of like we're buying green, I'm happy to support a fellow council member's good idea.
Yeah.
Council member Scruggins-Johnson?
I support this, I, I know that restaurants and some other services, it's really important that we support local, so thank you for raising this.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, nope, all right, done.
Council member Fender?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I agree, and I think we can do this on a personal level, too. I will just say, I got my doctors in Morrisville, my dentist, my vet, Evans Orthodontist was in Morrisville, so, yeah, we can stay in Morrisville all day long if we want, if you really want, you can.
Okay, it's after nine, so I'll be really quick. The next one, I'm sorry, can, can I just go to the next one real fast? The next one is just, I was thinking about, and this is not the same, but this is what spurred my thought process for this particular item. We do a state of Morrisville where staff kind of talks about, from a business perspective, because it's the Chambers event, what's happening in town. And it definitely, the audience is, I know it's open to the public, but the audience is the business community. I'd like us to think about doing something similar for the residents as well. And, and if you remember, this is, I'm going back now, I'm going way back now, we used to, council members used to hold their own kind of town hall, and I know Steve has talked about this in the, in the recent past, but, and we would pick a topic and we would present on that topic and, and then we all had our opportunity to do that if we wanted to. I'm not advocating for that, but I think we should also be involved in whatever this event kind of morphs into. And it doesn't have to be this year, it could be like starting, you know, I don't know, at the beginning of a budget year, next year, you know, or the beginning of the calendar year, I'm not tied to what timeframe we need to do this, but I, I'd like to see something like this, that's it.
Council member Rabadi?
I'd like to see it tied to a timeframe. I'd love to do this right before we open the budget portal, just to talk about the accomplishments of the past year that people might not be aware of. I mean, I think it's a great idea and, I mean, we, we've been looking for ways to get our, you know, our accomplishments out there more and let people, let's, people that live here see what they're getting for their tax dollars. And, I mean, I think that would be a way to do it.
I support it.
I support.
Hi, I support it. I think that in the past, we have also been invited to some of the neighborhoods and were able to speak on the budget, but we couldn't do it in more than three council members at a time. But this event would allow all of us to be in attendance.
Can I add one more thing, because I just thought about this as we're talking about it. I would not do this your typical event either. I would try to figure out how we can, we have some very talented people on staff, how to make this a more unique kind of event, too. Doesn't have to be in this room and it should, I always say beer, beer and pizza will bring people out, but that, that's a whole nother conversation.
I was about to say that.
Sounds like we have consensus to move that one along. And our last roundtable item by Mayor Potem Garymala. Yeah, can you scroll that one up?
Yes, so, the reason I brought this up is because I have been getting calls from different groups, you know, I put there Nepal Day, Bhadkamap, Punjabi Meela, Kiran 5K. The whole idea of having a Church Street Park was a park for everyone, kind of multi-use, that was the reason we did the South Lot, to have volleyball, basketball and a shelter. And furthermore, we wanted to ensure that people can use it year-round. And we also expanded our Parks and Recs and cultural, but I don't know why, unfortunately, everything is getting restricted to, Church Street Park basically doesn't operate from October to May and it's dormant because of the grass and all the reasons. And so I would like to explore how we can utilize it more for community needs, so that people can enjoy it and it should not be just a one-sport venue. And it should not be just a one-sport venue, you know, especially when you're not playing cricket for seven months. How can it be utilized? You know, simple example, Wembley in UK, they have a concert of Taylor Swift or something, and next day there will be a soccer match, 100,000 people. So we, and if the issue is like I've heard, common issues like grass and all those things, those things can be fixed, but not keeping, you know, but having that we have not utilizing and keeping it unused for seven months is not acceptable. So I'm, I'm just looking for what options do we have? And, and, and especially when permit is getting harder and harder, too. So I wanted to streamline saying that have it a good policy in place where when it's not in use, it can be opened up for other activities is what I'm looking for.
Comments, discussion from councilmembers? Mayor Colley?
So one of my strongly held values is using the amenities that you have to the maximum that you can. So I'd be interested in asking staff what opportunities we do have to, not just this park, but all our parks and all our facilities to try to highest and best use. I know that this lawn is very important and that we have contracts that we have to make sure that it's of at least a certain quality. What can we do up to that point? And still be able to use it and meet our contractual obligations, I think is really important. So I think there's an opportunity to try to do more. I know, I would maybe feel differently after we upgrade the irrigation and things like that. Because then that's going to be a different story. That's a lot more investment in that space. But right now, I think it's, don't want anyone touching the middle pitch, obviously. But the rest of it, I think, is, we probably have a little bit more wiggle room there. So I, I support your idea of looking into it more. Thank you.
Councilmember Scroggins, Johnson?
Yes, I have often wondered why we aren't using this area a little bit more. I am protective of the pitch, of course. We've invested a lot. But during the offseason, what would be the policy? Or an event size, or the event, you know, you know, restrictions, or even a deposit that would relate, you know, to be fair, to allow community activities or events and so forth? I know we've had a parade in the past. There's also sometimes gathering of large groups. And, and we would provide them with restrictions. But now I think the way that the rental policy is, they're not allowed to any longer participate or use that space. And I'd also like to look at the, the space at Cedar Fork Elementary. We've had events there and now I'm not seeing those events. I think that's also due to a policy change. So in addition to this area, I'd like to look at the other larger event spaces that we're renting for organizations as well. Thank you.
Mayor Potem Garamella?
And if, yeah, so the other thing also, sorry, go ahead, Donna. I don't see.
I was just going to say I'm in favor.
Thank. Another, like, my other concern I'm seeing is like our grounds are getting utilized for contracts. Like I'm, I'm using TCL as an example, and they're, they have soccers and others. I don't know how much we are getting the best value for our town. Yes, they are using it. But we should also have the right, if there is some big event, that we have, that hey, we need the ground, too. So I think that kind of a balance should be put so that it is not for Church Street, other areas, too. Because by eliminating, not having a Church Street, you can't go to other, other ones. So I can go on, but I think you guys have it.
Okay. Any other?
I would say, yes, and I, I would, this waiting for the dates, waiting, waiting to hear what the dates are before we can rent out our shelters is really problematic. So if, I don't, I don't know how we fix that. And I realize, you know, Major League Cricket gets to have certain weekends, but I don't know, blocking off half a year, just to wait for them to give us a handful of dates is, we need to, if possible, work on that, but I don't know.
We have to push on it because with certain timeline that we don't, then we are not obligated.
I mean, we're tying up the whole part, and you know, again, we're going through this whole cost recovery in parks and recs, and yet we're kind of hurting ourselves. So whatever can be done.
I can attest that the staff does push to get those dates.
What happened to the Morrisville minor, the cricket team? Do we still have that?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're still posting.
Okay.
Just hasn't started yet. Do you have what you need?
Yes, I wanted to touch base. Councilmember Johnson had mentioned previously, I believe, two council meetings ago, probably, when we mentioned roundtable, about the process of roundtable. We had pushed the dates back and councilmember Johnson raised concern about the shortened, I guess, deadline that was provided and wanting to revisit that, that process. Roundtable is an initiative of council, and we certainly want to do, do this in a way that works best for you. We elected to, in all transparency, we elected to move back the deadlines because it was a request, it was interest to make sure that the packet is going out. And it's a matter of transparency to the public that it's going out the week prior to the work session so that at least there is the weekend to review the items. It allows the roundtable item to go together with the packet, and it's also available to the public. In the past, a lot of times, the roundtable had a shorter timeline, and those will be items that will be published much closer to the day of the meeting. So we are trying to publish it earlier, meaning the week prior to the meeting. So this packet was released last Friday. So it allows the weekend and almost a full week for review, not only by council, but the members of the public. So that is the, the reason why of the dates. Again, we want to make this process work the best for you. So I wanted to hear from you moving forward, how would you like to see this process?
Well, no, I appreciate, I appreciate. I'm getting tired. I appreciate that yourself. The shorter amount of time for us, the better. I would just tell you that. I, I, I have, you, you send out the, the calendar, the quarterly calendar, and I kind of put, I put certain things on my own personal calendar when you, when you share that with us. So, and I kind of, that's what I, I adhere to. And so when, when things change, I don't always catch it and then I'm cut off guard if a date changes. So, but I would still tell you, the shortest amount of time you can give us, the better to get what we need in there.
Would it be helpful if, so we have been getting into-
That's only me, so you, you need to talk to others.
So let me ask, as you mentioned, putting things on the calendar, we have been getting in the habit of the town clerk sending those calendar reminders to, to just so that you have it. Would it be beneficial to send you those lines as calendar reminders? And I, and I have a couple of hands. Seems like I have Mayor Colley and I have councilmember Scroggins, Johnson. So let me start with Mayor Colley.
So I think if we work back from the work sessions, I think we kind of have in mind what we want to do as a roundtable, but then we don't maybe put it down until we're notified that it's coming. So to your point, if that's like part of the rolling calendar, that we have a work session and that, and then you also put in the date where roundtable submissions are due for that, we can capture it early. If you put it in Bianca's email to us about this is the deadline for that, and it's, you have a, if you give us a week before that deadline, that's probably enough time. But the last time it felt like it was shorter. So we, we know the work sessions are coming. We know when they are, but we need, I need a little bit more of a reminder and a little urgency that if you want to get it in. So I think the timeline that you presented to us, that we pushed back this time, I think we, I'd be okay with it. Just I need a better reminder and to know that the deadline's there and be reminded a couple of times. Because I think you guys did that, but now that we're more aware that it's for staff and for transparency for the public. So it's going to take the same amount of time for me to do it. It's just about when I do it and when I submit. And it was really nice this time to have it so far in advance that I could see where everyone else is and process them and stuff. So that was nice. So that's the balance. So I'm, I'm supportive of Liz and trying to make sure that we all get them in.
Thank you.
Let me recognize councilmember Scroggins, Johnson.
Thank you. So a couple thoughts. I do recognize that the public does not see the town council meeting agendas until Friday before the Tuesday meeting. And so I like to have the weekend to socialize that agenda with, you know, members of the public or key individuals that might be stakeholders of the topics discussed. And I use that time most effectively. It would be good if we had the roundtable, for those weeks that we have a roundtable, if we had those topics identified and on the roster that Friday as well. I think that would allow the council, the ability to socialize, as well as the members of public, to see what's in the next week ahead. And there's some advantages to that. Now, when do we have to turn those in, I think is the main question? It would be good if it was like the Wednesday before the Friday. If, if we have a form and, and you've already provided that to us, that would be the deadline. But I've submitted items in the past off-cycle just because I knew I was thinking of it and I submitted that form so that it was ready. I didn't wait until you reminded me. I just put it down when I thought of it. So there's that as well. So I would say if we could adjust our deadline, but have the reminders. I like Mayor Colley's suggestion about having some reminders. Here's that link, you know, you don't have to submit it, you know, for a meeting, but you can submit it at any time. Thanks.
I have Mayor Colley. Okay. And, and to that point, the Wednesday prior to being released on a Friday is, is very tight. While I send you all a forms link, it, it does take quite a bit of effort to take from the form links entry to the spreadsheet that you all receive through the, through the Granica system. So let's, let's, how about, let, let me look at the, at the schedule and the deadline and see how tight we can, we could do it. And then I can come back and I send you some things to, that you can react to. Would that work for you all?
Yes, and yes to a calendar invite. I think the calendar invites are very helpful because they get on my calendar whether I accept it or not, and I can see them, so.
I just have one thing that I cannot miss. I know, I know we're ready to go. This is a very important week for, for all of us, but most importantly, for one person in our team. This week commemorates the 25th anniversary that Jeannie Hooks has been serving this community. That is a big accomplishment.
Where is the cake?
Yeah.
I think, I think we can all agree that Jeannie has shown extreme dedication to this commi, to this community, and we are extremely grateful for the services that she has provided. She has been often referred as the Morrisville Google, and I literally just used her for a lot of reference today. And she has been extremely helpful. We are very grateful for her service and for everything that she does for every one of us.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent.
Very much so.
And in the chat, both Congressmembers Robati and Vicki Scroggins-Johnson say congratulations to you.
Thank you for your dedication. It's been a blast. Great. I entertain a motion to adjourn then. I have a motion from councilmember Fender, a second from Mayor Potem Garamella. All those in favor of adjourned, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 4-0. We are adjourned. It is 9:29. Thank you.